Okay, today is September 10th, 2020 at 5 o'clock. As Mayor, I call this meeting of Stanton City Council to order. I note that this meeting is being broadcast over the city's cable channel and streamed live on the city's website so that members of the public may hear our meeting. The meeting is also being recorded. I ask the Clerk of Council to call the roll for confirmation of those council members present for today's meeting.
Mayor Ochs.
Here.
Vice Mayor Robertson.
Here.
Ms. Dole.
Here.
Mr. Holmes.
Here.
Ms. Darby.
Here.
Ms. Mead. Mr. Claffey.
Here.
I confirm that all council members are present.
I ask that the City Manager, Steve Rosenberg, note the participation of any city officials or colleagues or anyone else during today's meeting by Zoom or telephone.
Madam Mayor, we have several individuals who are participating this evening on the Zoom platform during either the work session or the regular meeting or both. In addition to council members Dole and Mead, we also have participating on the Zoom platform, Mark Richmond, David Morgan, Trayford McCray, Sarah Holbert. All other city officials are present in council chambers.
Thank you. Please let me mention that notice reasonable under the circumstances of this meeting has been given to the public contemporaneously with the notice provided to members of city council. In addition to limited public seating in City Hall, access to this meeting has been provided to the public by audio feed on the city's cable channel and the city's website. During this work session, as in the past, there will be no opportunity for public comment. Public comment will be received during council's regular meeting, which will begin at 7:30 PM. Instructions for public comment by telephone can be found on agenda for the regular meeting and on council's website at www.ci.stanton.v a.us backslash government backslash city-council. Also, let me highlight and have reflected in the meeting minutes that this meeting, although being conducted in person, is also being conducted by Zoom with virtual participation by certain members of city council, given the catastrophic nature of the declared emergency and disaster related to the COVID-19 outbreak, which is part of the total circumstances, makes it impractical or unsafe to assemble in a single location. The meeting is being held consistent with the City Council Ordinance 2020-04 regarding continuity of government, a copy of which can be found online at www.stanton.v a.us backslash C-O-G-O-R-D 2020-04. Once again, I would like to remind everyone to please wear your mask if you are moving about in the city council chambers as well as throughout the city hall. And if you can just leave it on at all times, that would be great, unless you're speaking at the microphone. If you'd like to remove it, feel free. We normally have some sanitizing wipes if you care to wipe the microphone off before and after speaking. Also, to the council members, if you could please address the mayor, and I will recognize you to be able to speak. All right. The next item on the agenda is the consideration of work session and regular meeting agendas.
Madam Mayor.
Councilwoman Claffey.
I move to approve the work session and regular meeting agenda with the following changes. Remove Item 5, Discussion and Participation of Police Department and Fire Rescue Department in July 4th Parade off the work session agenda in its entirety. Number 2, Move Item 6, A Discussion of Previously Adopted Resolution of the Council of the City of Stanton, Virginia Regarding Litigation Related to Continued Zoning and Building Code Violations, from the Work Session Agenda to the Regular Meeting Agenda as Item F. 3, Add to the Work Session Agenda a Discussion Concerning Zoom Meetings as Item 5. 4, Add to the Regular Meeting Agenda a Reconsideration of the Purchase and Sale Agreement by and Between American Shakespeare Center in the City of Stanton, Virginia Concerning the Parking Lot on 240 North Lewis Street as Item G.
Okay, we have a motion on the floor. Is there a second?
Oh, Mayor, I second.
We have a second. Any further discussion?
Yes, this is Carolyn Dole. The item number 5, I requested that that be put on the agenda because we have some Stanton residents, including city employees, that wanted to hear a public discussion of this. So I don't know why it's being removed.
Any further discussion? Ms. Simmons, please call the roll.
Mr. Holmes.
Aye.
Ms. Darby.
Aye.
Mayor Ochs.
Aye.
Ms. Mead.
No.
Vice Mayor Robertson.
Aye.
Ms. Dole.
No.
Mr. Claffey.
Aye.
Motion carries.
Okay, the next item on the agenda is item number 2, and it's also Item B on the regular meeting agenda, a discussion of ordinance to amend the FY 2021 budget for the City of Stanton by adding Budget Amendment Number 3. Mr. Rosenberg.
Madam Mayor, Phil Chair, the city's Chief Finance Officer, will present this item.
Madam Mayor, members of councils, a pleasure to be here this evening. Tonight, we're here to introduce Budget Amendment Number 3, which totals $5,577,648, and is broken down between the general fund appropriation of $3.9 million and school funding of $1.6 million. The general fund appropriation breakout includes FY 2020 CARES Act carryover in the amount of $2,075,000, FY 21 CARES Act receipts of $1,675,000, CARES Act funding for elections of $56,000, and fund balance of $153,000 for the elimination of three furlough days for staff. CARES Act expenditures will be reviewed by the Assistant City Manager, but includes expenses which have met the following expense criteria: expenses that are necessary and incurred due to the COVID-19 pandemic, expenses that were not accounted for in the most recent budget approved as of March 27, 2020, and expenses that were incurred between March 1st and December 30, 2020. Expenses have been allocated to general facilities, human resources, public safety, business recovery, rent assistance, utility assistance, childcare assistance, tourism, and planning and development. The schools appropriation of $1.6 will include technology to enhance remote learning in the amount of $624,000, operational expense for protective measures, $752,000, food service, $137,000, and childcare of $78,000. A public hearing has been properly advertised, and the City Manager recommends the ordinance be introduced as presented, and that council conduct a public hearing as scheduled. Yeah. Ms. Beauregard.
All right. Thank you. I'm going to provide a few more details on the CARES Act funding. I think the goal for this evening is just to have you all kind of understand what we spent the money on, what has been allocated so far for the current fiscal year that we're in, and then what we would like to recommend for the remaining amount of time, which is through December 30. And then we have some items at the end that remain unfunded or, you know, we haven't made any decisions on yet. And then you can ask questions, and if we could get some general agreement on some things, that would be great for us to move forward, or if you have questions. And we'll be coming back to you, obviously, before December 30 to kind of wrap everything up for the CARES funding. So on that note, let me just briefly go through this, and then you all can ask any questions. So for FY 20, actual expenses were around $132,000. The things that you would expect, it was spent on PPE, disinfectant, disinfectant cleaning supplies, Zoom platform subscriptions for virtual meetings, testing for employees, floor markings like you've seen in the hallways, the plexiglass that you've seen. We did some emergency disaster relief loan program administered by the Stanton Creative Community Fund, and then paying for communications related to COVID. For FY 21 so far, actual and encumbered is $1.9 million. And I broke those out into some categories. The first one is kind of general facilities of $127,884,000. And again, that's basically the things I just said, the distancing markers, PPE signage, staff time for those dedicated substantially to COVID-related activities such as cleaning restrooms and things like that and keeping things disinfected. We added the touchless technologies in the restrooms that you've probably seen, so that was, that happened. And then updates to courthouse audio equipment as well, including meals for jurors and additional courtroom cleaning and disinfecting. Under human resources slash employees, about $97,000. As you all are well aware, this included the elimination of all furlough days for public safety employees, teleworking to better accommodate employees who need to work from home, and serology testing for any sort of city employee who requested it. Under public safety specifically, about $93,449, which included a sheriff's office vehicle to accommodate transported prisoners and maintain separation, four cardiac defibrillators for the fire department to maintain distance from possible COVID-19 patients during CPR, and then expenses related to COVID for their Middle River Regional Jail. Under business recovery slash assistance, you all are well aware that our last council meeting, the $500,000 for that was appropriated. So that's in that category, that's what represents $500,000. And Mr. Trey spoke briefly about the city schools. So far in '21, $1.1 million has been, has been, is an actual or encumbered expense, and that includes technology, operations and transportation, and nutrition needs for meal delivery to students and associated equipment with that. So those are the funds that have been spent for CARES to date. So in terms of what staff is recommending going forward through December 30, we have one category that we're kind of calling Support for Individuals/Nonprofits of $250,000. And how we propose doing this is working through the community foundation of the Central Blue Ridge. They would serve as a subrecipient of these funds. And for three areas that are in need, after many conversations with them, one is rent slash mortgage assistance of $125,000, second is gas, electric utilities assistance of $25,000, and childcare assistance of $100,000. And these figures may change, increase if the demand begins to change, and we would write such an agreement so that if funds had to be moved around within these categories within the foundation, that would be possible, and also will be very specific in the type of data we need from them that our auditors would need at the end of the day when they start seeing how we spent those funds. So those are some needs in the community right now that staff recommends that CARES money be used for. In terms of the city schools, the remaining funds of $458,000 includes more technology needs, and that would also included in that is childcare for school employees. For the SDVA, we've allocated $12,000, or recommending at least. This would help make downtown a safer experience in light of physical distancing and to brand some events virtually. They would pay, these funds would pay for live cam technology, digital shopping and dining guide, additional sandwich boards to provide signage on how to enjoy downtown in a safe manner, and additional mobile power boxes for special events. Similarly related, visitor center slash tourism, $32,240. We're actually preparing to reopen the visitor center. We're starting to make plans for that. So in order to make this experience safer, this would include interactive displays, digital tourism guides, PPE and face coverings for the public, contactless visitor sign-in system, and outdoor kiosks to eliminate the need to even enter the center if you don't want to, and then air purifiers and updated bathrooms with touchless technology similar to what we have in other city facilities. Speaking of the quality of the air, we have $100,000 set aside for HVAC improvements. This is still under review. We're trying to reserve some time with our vendor. Obviously, they're tied up. Everybody is thinking of this, so hopefully that will happen this month, and we'll have a better estimate. And what, these are very old systems, so it's not just a matter of slapping a new filter in or a different type of filter, because that would probably make our system pretty inefficient. So we're going to be looking at some options for that to make the air, to try to clean the air the best we can. Under technology improvements, we've reserved $200,000 for improvements to this room and the caucus room, and we're still exploring these as well, especially if the hybrid meetings are going to continue to be the norm for a while, and even when meetings come back all in person. We're looking at audio improvements. Obviously, as long as we're using Zoom, they would integrate with that. In-room video and presentation displays that can be integrated with Zoom, audio stream improvements, streaming video, integrating public comment sections into the system to be more efficient at that in terms of call screening and smart boards in the caucus room. Under planning and development, we set aside $50,000 for an enterprise package for permit and plan review management and code enforcement, and this would basically allow customers to access these services online, and this will hopefully improve responsiveness to citizens and help staff be more efficient as well in these areas. The Valley Alcohol Safety Action Program, which is basically another arm of government, and they provide education and training to reduce, basically driving under the influence, the impacts of that, and they're requesting funds as well to help facilitate their programming of $3,950, and that includes two desktop computers, one laptop computer, two cameras, and an intercom system so that their staff can communicate with clients in the lobby but maintain an appropriate physical distance. So in light of all that, we have a reserved contingency in all of these items of just over $500,000. And basically, that's a contingency. We know we're going to spend more on PPE. We may have more requests from the visitor center. We may have more public safety requests. So we've kind of set that aside in all these areas. And in addition, we have an unreserved amount of $684,000. But if you go and look at the request still under consideration, if you're just looking at the 684, the request still under consideration exceeds that by almost $299,000. And that does not include the two items I'm going to talk about first. The first is temporary housing. It came to our attention through the community foundation that this could also be a need. The Valley Community Services Board did receive a grant recently of $120,000 to continue housing individuals at the Motel 6 through December 31, but there is a waiting list. We are still getting that information as to what that would mean in terms of a cost. And so as soon as we have that information, we'll let council know what that could be. And then the second item on here that we don't have a cost for is hazard pay. The CARES Act is very clear that hazard pay or some form of hazard, the auditors are interesting because they don't actually like to call it that, but they will, the CARES Act allows this for public safety very clearly, because they assume, the CARES Act assumes public safety is substantially dedicated to the mitigation of responding to COVID. So we're exploring the extent to which these funds could be used for such a type of pay and to other, and if there's a mechanism to provide some other type of one-time pay to other city employees as well. But we could not use CARES money for that. We would have to use our general fund dollars to pay for other city employees. So we're still engaging with our auditor on this. We're still talking about this internally, and we'll be sharing a final recommendation with council on this soon, in the very near future. So there are other requests that came forward that are not funded right now is a COVID Response Unit that Fire and Rescue was asked for, $700,000. Two items in the police department for SUVs for $106,000, and a parking enforcement system for $38,000. There are several items we actually have not funded yet for the visitor center, which is a newly designed website, $75,000, and new furniture and exhibits, a reconfiguration of the visitor center for $40,000, and $5,000 custom branded face coverings for $21,935. And the last item on his, Greg said I could take off, so you can ignore that last item on there. He has figured out a way to cover that last item. So that's our report, and be happy to answer any questions. Yes, sir.
Hey, Vice Mayor Robertson.
Just something you said caught my, you know, you said about, because it always worries me about the schoolchildren, maybe, and maybe the school board could probably answer. You said there's money dedicated for school lunches and everything.
The nutrition program.
Yeah, I just know that, you know, there's a lot of kids, I mean, they rely on that, you know, sometimes it may be the only good meal they get a day.
Garrett is here, but I actually heard anecdotally from another parent whose children are receiving the meals that it is excellent.
Okay.
And so I heard, okay, so I heard anecdotally. I'm sure Dr. Smith can speak more to that, too, if you have specific questions about how they're doing that.
Yeah, I just, just wanted to make sure that it's kids were taken care of.
I've heard nothing but good things about the nutrition program. Would you like Dr. Smith to answer?
Yeah, I mean, I would love to hear, you know, how it's being administered and all that good stuff.
I have a quick question, too, for Dr. Smith.
All right.
Just about the sanitation, if you could kind of explain a little bit about that, too.
Okay. Well, Mr. Robertson, to answer your question, right now, we have meal pickups at four schools, not the high school yet because of the construction going on. And so what we did was we surveyed families to see who needed meals. And we also, this year, we got the community eligibility provision for the first time ever. So every child in Stanton City Schools gets free breakfast and lunch regardless. And so we pushed really hard to get to this point for the past three years, and we finally got in there. So it's great, but now, you know, we don't have all the students back in school yet, but we're still required to have meals available for all families for breakfast and lunch. So they're coming through the pickup line right now. We have some families facing hardships. We're using our bus drivers to deliver to those families, and this is taking place on Tuesdays and Thursdays. So what you get is a few days of breakfast and lunch each time you pick it up. So you might pick up, you know, six total meals.
Thank you for what you're doing. Thank you.
Thank you.
Councilwoman Darby.
Dr. Smith, could you like break down a little bit about what the sanitation, you know, what's, what the money would be used as far as for that, especially since right now, we're not, we don't have kids in school.
Yeah, so, so a lot like City Hall, we're getting the flushless toilet valves, the touchless faucets. Instead of water fountains now, we've got the water bottle fillers. We've got, obviously, PPE and things like that. We've got these giant, I call them germ guns, because that's what they look like, these giant sprayers that you spray off the surfaces and it dries within 10 seconds, masks. I'm trying to think, what am I, what am I forgetting? There's, there are, you know, several of those, of those types of items. The, the remote thermometers, so everyone gets a temperature check on the way in. I got a feeling that that's probably here to stay, because, you know, if we don't have staff and students coming in with fevers in the morning, it's most likely that we're going to get these outbreaks, like even like the flu outbreak we had last year. So we really appreciate the city's support, and these are things I don't think we would be able to afford in a normal budget year. So this CARES Act funding really helps us make schools safer moving forward, and it is, and it's going to be a big deal. I'm interested to see how it plays out when we get the flu season and everything, because schools should, should be, should be safer for everybody. Madam Mayor.
Ms. Claffey.
I don't know if this pertains to Dr. Smith or Leslie, but in the city schools portion of this, there's $458,000 split between technology needs for wireless and server capacity and childcare for school employees. Could you give me a breakdown of what's going where?
I don't have that breakdown with me.
I can, I can kind of explain what some of that looks like. So the childcare for the school employees is our teachers, their children can come to school because the teachers all have to teach from their classrooms. And so our instructional assistants have been repurposed to provide childcare for those children. Generally, they're in the elementary schools, they're in the cafeterias where they can socially distance, they're doing their schoolwork there while their parents are teaching from their classrooms. And then you asked, what else was it, Mr. Claffey?
Well, the other, the other half of, well, I don't know, the other portion of the money goes to technology needs, including increase in wireless and server capacity.
Yeah, so that, some of that went to infrastructure. Some of it was, and I think you, everybody knows that we have a partnership with T-Mobile. We've got over 400 hotspots out to families so they have internet connectivity. We've given out about 1,000 refurbished Chromebooks. We still got to the end and realized that we had still some families that we hadn't reached, and so we used some of the schools' existing Chromebooks, got those out to families, and we're basically going to refill the ones that were already assigned to the schools. We're going to, you know, refill that supply of them, so that'll be part of it. And then the last thing you had on there, Mr. Claffey?
It's just two things there. I guess my, my main concern is the childcare for school employees. This would be a new expense this year that has never been heard before, the COVID crisis.
Right, we've never provided childcare before for our, for our employees.
I mean, I know there's a sentiment out there in some of our citizens that they are having to give up their work hours because they're having to take care of their children, whereas they were planning on the schools being open so their children would be taken care of during that time frame to allow them to work. So it's a little contradiction to me. You're making it difficult on the citizens, but you're taking care of the teachers'.
Yeah.
Children.
Sure. They're our essential employees, and we want them to be teaching from their classroom and utilizing all the technology and resources that we have. We've also been working with a community group called C4, and that is the Community Foundation United Way, the YMCA's in Wayne'sboro and Stan Augusta Health. And so what we're doing is helping to identify childcare for those families. We've had also some, some churches participating in that with us as well. So we did a survey about childcare for all of our families, and we were able to direct them to the C4 Group for Childcare. And if families are in need of childcare, they can contact me directly, and I'd be happy to help them out with some of those options.
That'd be good.
Mr. Claffey, this is where the $100,000 comes in, that the city would contribute towards that effort to start, and that's a starting point potentially, but...
But that would be for the general population and not just the children of teachers.
That's correct. These are general populations.
You're talking two different programs.
We are, correct.
So that's the $100,000 out of the community foundation.
That's what I was talking, yes. That's for the community childcare, exactly what Dr. Smith is talking about.
And originally, we were trying to do city employees, too, in the schools, but as we worked through it with Parks and Rec, then we kind of ended up splitting off and, you know, on doing that. There wasn't as much of a need either when, when the city employees were surveyed for who needed childcare.
Well, I'd just be curious going forward, how much money we are earmarking for this program, because as soon as we get schools back open, there's a potential saving.
And it runs out in December.
Remember, it runs out December 30.
Right.
So, and so right now, our first allocation will be $100,000, and if that changes, you know, we would adjust as necessary, so.
Yeah, but even, even based on that, we still have a shortfall between about December 31st of this year, 2020, correct?
A short, what do you mean?
We still don't have enough money?
No, that would cover us through December 30. That would cover, that would cover our, what we could contribute now. The need may go on, and so the decision will have to be, how does that need, how does that need to continue to be covered?
All right, well, we just need to monitor how much money we're spending on this program.
Absolutely.
Okay.
And that's where the community foundation will help come in and monitor that for us, and they do a very good job at that, and they'll be excellent at that, so.
Good deal. Thank you.
Any other questions that I can?
Yeah, I have a question. This is Brenda Mead.
That's a woman of me.
Dr. Smith, are you going to do any air filtration in classrooms in some of the older schools?
So we did get this question several times, and we have changed out all the filters in the school. That's actually another part of the cost. But to do those, what are those heavy-duty filters called?
HEPA.
Those HEPA filters, it puts an incredible strain on our systems, and so they're, you know, they'll break the systems down, they'll have to be changed very frequently. I know some other businesses in town looked at the same thing and had the same exact issue, so it's not just us, but, yeah, those HEPA filters are problematic for the systems that we have in place.
Thanks. And I have some questions for Ms. Beauregard.
Yes, ma'am.
Can you give me a little more, more information about the COVID Response Unit, the $700,000 allocation to that potentially?
Let me find my paper here. Let's see. You can ask your second question while I'm looking for that.
And I was wondering if we've had cases of COVID-19 amongst our first responders yet?
I'm not aware of any, but Mr. Rosenberg is behind him. Okay, here we go. So I think the answer to that is no.
I don't believe we have had any cases.
That's good news.
So I'd be happy to send this out, but I have a bulleted list here. So this COVID Rescue Response Unit would help our personnel respond to all incidents, especially those... especially those that are EMS-related. And it helps treat it as if all of our personnel are exposed to COVID. It's kind of the assumption they need to use, obviously. And so when returning from an incident, the personnel and apparatus are removed from service for decontamination. The personnel quickly shower, change clothes. The apparatus itself is thoroughly cleaned with an electrostatic ionization sanitizing machine. If they have to have multiple, if multiple calls are being app, you know, answered simultaneously, they don't have to, you know, you have an extra apparatus. You don't have to quickly put something back into place. This could provide mask and decontamination of a facility with an outbreak. So it would, let's see, I think that's the main bullet points. And it would basically serve as the primary response unit to a mass COVID outbreak.
Thank you. Okay, thank you, everyone. Thank you, Dr. Smith. Any questions for Mr. Traer? If you think of any additional questions, this will be on the regular meeting agendas, Agenda B. Yeah, Councilman Holmes.
Yes, I had one question. Were we looking at possible considering public work employees as essential employees? You know, as far as like if they get extra pay if they have to.
So we're looking at extra pay for all employees. There's just only a portion, only the public safety employees are allowable under, to be used with CARES money. But we are looking at all employees.
All right, thank you. The next item on the agenda is the presentation of flood mitigation initiative. Mr. Rosenberg.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Prelimarily, before I start, let me note for my colleagues who will be participating in this presentation that due to the changes in the agenda, we have a little bit of breathing room with our presentation and perhaps can take up to about 6:30 or so, certainly no later than 6:30. And that will be helpful to us, given the amount of content that we have to present to council this evening. Let me just offer to council some introductory remarks. It has now been just over a month since the devastating flood of August 8th and nearly three weeks since the recurrence on August 22nd. As we have all observed previously, the Stanton community, including residents, businesses, and nonprofit organizations, has demonstrated tremendous care and resilience in the face of adversity. I again take note of that fact today and laud the ongoing efforts to recover from the events of last month. At the same time, it makes sense now to look forward. City staff recognizes there are many questions that follow from the two recent flood events. Why did it happen? Will it happen again? What can be done to prepare for similar events? Specifically, what will the city do? This afternoon, we'd like to begin to explore these issues with council and the public. Even though we now have nearly an hour on the agenda, an amount of time considerably longer than normal, given the complexity of the issues, our presentation today will provide only a high-level overview. Think 30,000 feet. More detailed discussions will be necessary and are certain to follow. And finally, please allow me to make one more observation before we begin. The conditions we see today are the result of the city's topography and prior decisions made and prior actions taken over decades, if not centuries. Any measures we determine to pursue as a community and as a city government will also take time and, as you will hear, resources. Let me share with you the topics that we're going to cover this evening. And we have, you know, a significant presentation for you. You have some visual aids at your places and those have been emailed to council members, copies of presentations, as well as some other visual aids. You'll hear about the identification of the problem. We then will be joined by a representative from a locality in Maryland, which has experienced some similar issues. We thought it would be helpful for council to receive a case study of sorts, to learn from the experiences of another locality so that you might understand our road ahead. You might better understand our road ahead. You will hear about projects in the capital improvement plan presently. You will hear about fiscal constraints, which are considerable. That will be followed by a presentation about grant and funding opportunities. And then I will wrap up with current and ongoing efforts and next steps. And as I've suggested, we have, we have a team approach to this presentation this evening. First, you'll hear from John Glover, the city's building official. Then you will hear from Mark Richmond, who is the chief of the Howard County, Maryland Stormwater Management Division in that county's Bureau of Environmental Services. And Mark will share more with you about Howard County's experiences in Elicott City, Maryland, where they have experienced historic floods over the course of the last several years. Nikki Mills, the city engineer, will then share information with you about the CIP. Phil Traer, our chief finance officer, will talk to you about the fiscal constraints. Rebecca Joyce, who is the community program manager with the Central Shenandoah Planning District Commission, will talk with us about grant and funding opportunities. And I would also note that we have with us this evening Billy Vaughn, the city's Community Development and Economic Development Director, and Pete Kessiker, the city's Environmental Programs Administrator, both of whom are part of our team on this subject, but will not be participating in the presentation this evening. But they have made considerable contribution in our preparations to bring us to you this evening. So with that, let me go ahead and first ask John Glover, the city's building official, to set the stage for you and to really define, define the problem that we have here in the city.
Welcome.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, members of council. Subjects take kind of his new attention to an old problem. And when I say old, even recent history, 1985, 1995, 1996, and 2003. So this is an old problem. We've had floods back to 1896, a major one. So it's in our history. I mean, we have floods. Stanton, like many other cities of that time period, was built on the floodplain. Most, a lot of cities were because of the access to the water. That was important. So a lot of cities of our age were built in the floodplain. Through the years, as Steve alluded to, decades, maybe even centuries, development has increased that risk of flooding. Didn't used to be something that was thought about. Now it is. For that reason, a significant portion of our downtown, that may decor the city, is in the floodplain or even to a further step, the floodway. Due to, and I refer you to the, a map that's an attachment that we have that shows the floodplains in Stanton. And it also shows the drainage areas, the red arrows and the acreages of those drainage. Now, those drainages do carry out into the county of Augusta, but water doesn't care where, you know, it's going downhill. It doesn't matter whose boundaries it crosses, it's going downhill. And the wharf is the low place. That's the downhill. That's where it's all going. Due to our historic designations in our downtown, a lot of FEMA and local floodplain regulations are waived or there are exceptions due to the historic nature of our downtown. A lot of, I say that because a lot of this redevelopment that's taken place in the city over the past 30 years wouldn't have happened without those exceptions. So our, our historic designation is a double-edged sword. It allows us to develop it, but it also opens us up to more flooding down the road. Because now there's development there that will flood. You know, it's, it's important to develop in these historic districts for the vibrancy of our downtown. And, you know, just the historic fabric, I mean, that is Stanton, our historic downtown. That is, that defines Stanton. That is Stanton. But it also opens us up to these potentials for flooding. Let me set the stage for the August storms that we had. I'm going to primarily refer to the August 8th storm because I just have more data on that one and you'll see some attachments in your briefing also about that. But let me set the stage. The floodplain maps that you see before you are based on a 100-year frequency storm. Our stormwater facilities are based on approximately a 10-year storm. They're designed to handle the rain, the stormwater from a 10-year storm. If you look at your, one of your attachments that has the weather data from the August 8th storm, you'll see that some areas had as much as 7.4 inches of rain. That amount of rain fell in approximately two hours. This amount of rain in those small geographic areas exceeds a 1,000-year storm. That's the magnitude we're talking about, a lot of water. In those small geographic areas, not across the whole city. This is according, this data comes from the National Weather Service Precipitation Frequency Estimates. You can basically map it and say what, what, how much rain in so much time and what's the equivalent storm, frequency storm that you would have. So you can see we have a big problem. I'd just like to say, you know, this is not going to be an easy fix. You know, we have a lot to think about. It's not going to be an easy fix. But it's going to take a lot of thoughtful process and time, as Steve said earlier, to work through this. I think you will see from Mark Richmond's presentation from Elicott City and Howard County, Maryland, they faced a very similar situation that Stanton faced, probably worse than Stanton, but, but very similar. And their town is similar to Stanton also, so.
Madam Mayor, I'd like to ask if, if we can have council members collect questions so that we can get through the entire presentation and then come back to questions of the various speakers. I think that that would be most efficient and ensure that we can get through all of the material that we have to present.
So we will wait till the end of the presentation.
And, were you finished?
Yes, I am.
Okay, very good.
Yeah.
Let me emphasize one point that John has made. And that is, he made reference to the complication caused by the historic designation. And to be very clear about that, these structures that are in the historic district are not subject to certain floodproofing requirements. Is that, or we're permitting, we permit improvements to be made to these structures in the floodplain and in the floodway that would not be permitted if they were not, if they were outside of an historic district.
Yes.
And so we see improvements and modernization to these structures with the investment of, you know, certainly millions of dollars to modernize these buildings that are in vulnerable areas. And it's all permitted, but the consequence of that is that now you have all of this investment that is vulnerable to the reality that they're in the floodway and in, and in the floodplain. So transitioning now, let me introduce you all to Mark Richmond with Howard County, Maryland. And he has been very generous in agreeing to join us this evening to share with you the experiences in Howard County, in Elicott City, which I understand is an unincorporated area of, of Howard County. But it is, as Stanton is for Augusta County, the location of the county offices, you know, the historic center of Howard County is Elicott City. And so they have, as I'm sure Mark will share with us, dealt with these issues. And as I suggested to you, we thought that it would be an interesting way to convey to you the complexity of the issues to hear about the experiences in another locality that are quite similar to ours. So with that, let me introduce Mark, and Mark, thank you again for joining us.
Sure, well, thanks, thanks for having me. I guess my first question is, can you see the screen okay? And can you hear me okay?
Yes, we can.
Yes.
Super. Okay, well, I know time is limited and there is a lot of material to cover, so I'm just going to get right to it. I'm going to give you a brief history of the Elicott City flooding, which the more I hear about Stanton, the more similarities I hear. And then talk about our current efforts, which our county executive has called the Safe and Sound Plan. And then, you know, questions can be held till, till the end. So Elicott City also has a history of flooding dating back to the mid-1800s. Based on the location of Elicott City, we actually have kind of a double whammy. We can be flooded by the Patapsco River, which will back up into the city, which the, the older storms tended to do that. What we're seeing now, since the 2011 storm, is that what we're calling top-down flooding. We're just getting too much water in a short period of time in the watershed. And the river at the bottom of the, of the town isn't that bad, but we're just getting flooded from uphill. This is a, the green area is the watershed, the area that drains to downtown. The area in the ellipse is our downtown area, our historic area. The blue arrows indicate stream tributaries that basically all converge into the downtown area. The way I like to describe it is consider the mouth of a funnel and a bucket of water. If you're given a long time to pour the water into the funnel, you shouldn't have any problems in spillage. But when you're given just a few minutes to pour all that water into the funnel, you can imagine the, all the water that's going to go everywhere. And that's, that's what we've been seeing in our 2016 and 2018 storms. Just real briefly, the July 30th, 2016 storm, we had roughly six inches of rain in two hours. Similar to you all, the National Weather Service considered that a 1,000-year event. 22 months later, we had another 1,000-year event. We had about six and a half inches in three hours. And the note at the bottom, which probably doesn't mean much to you because you're not sure where Catonsville is, but it's right across the river, they had, just several miles away, they had about 10 inches of rain in the same time period. So it's hard to say we, we got lucky with six and a half inches of rain in three hours and six feet of water down Main Street, but it could have been worse. During the July 2016 event, here are some photos at the peak of the storm. We have, cars are parked on Main Street and cars were basically washed down Main Street. Some ended up in the river, some just piled up. It was a quick, intense, flashy storm. So it wasn't more than a couple hours later, this is what we were left with downtown. You can see the, you can see all the debris. You can see the mess it made. I wanted to show two examples of some damage that was caused by the storms. This is a prime example, and I'm not sure if you can see my cursor, but the building that I'm pointing to that's over the river, I should point out that part of our problem is that a lot of the historic buildings are built over top of the river. So this is the first point where the river actually sees a building. We have buildings to the left. We have a stone-faced, steep slope to the right. And when the water exceeds that open- And when the water exceeds that opening, it does what you see in the top right picture, which is it goes through the wall of the building. It also came up through the wooden floorboards of the building. And we essentially had debris, including trees and the contents of the building, basically coming out the front door and the front window of the building. So that was the 2016 storm. Bottom left, they poured a concrete floor. They fortified the wall. We had the May 2018 storm and the bottom right, you can see what we were left with. Mother Nature kind of laughed at us and the hole was even bigger the second time. So that was one example of, of, you know, some of the problems we saw. We had a major road washed out, Ellicott Mills Drive. The picture on the top right, which is neat to all of us engineers, it kind of looks like a pipe within a pipe. That inner pipe is actually the bottom of a, an arch pipe. So it actually raised up the bottom of the pipe and that helped to cause the roadway to fail. The bottom two pictures are the, show you the concrete culvert that we put in, in its place. And that is now the road is open and the road is functioning. So how did we go about addressing the flooding problem? What was our plan? In 2011 Tropical Storm Lee, which at the time we thought was a, a big deal. We had flooded basements, we had, you know, in certain areas a foot of water on the road. We had a consultant onboard. We had them do a hydrology and hydraulic study, an H and H study for the small portion of the road that was inundated. That generated some options for doing large projects on, on county property. The administration at that time decided that the cost benefit wasn't there since we had only, you know, basement flooding and, and small effort, small flooding conditions. Then we had the July 2016 event. We expanded the scope of the study to cover a larger area. And we opened up our consultant to consider any and every option, which included working on public and private property, including removal of buildings. We basically said nothing's off the table. What they came back with was there's basically two ways to deal with this flooding. We could either reduce the amount of water, which would be through large detention facilities that let the water out slow. Or we could do conveyance projects acknowledging that we can't stop all the water. So let's try to take it under or around the town. What we ended up with was a combination of both. An important question that we asked ourselves and people asked us a lot was basically how much flooding is okay? And how often is it okay for that amount of water to flood? You know, do we take every drop of water off the road in every storm? Is a foot of water, two feet of water on the road acceptable if it happens every 10 years, every 20 years? So that's a question that we had to ask ourselves as far as setting up a design criteria. What helped us make that decision is that we had the Corps of Engineers do a dry floodproofing study. They basically came back and told us how much water could be basically floodproofed on our commercial buildings and residential buildings by putting in, you know, heavier pane glass, putting in floodgates, you know, raising HVAC systems. They said that it was somewhere between two and a half and three feet. So our final plan basically still has about three feet of water on the road for a storm similar to our July 2016 event. But I'll talk a little bit more about how we're dealing with that three feet of water on the road. We had a major public outreach effort. We solicited public input in numerous ways and the public was not shy about giving us input. We also have a master plan process ongoing at the same time where we're looking at how can we, and this is through our planning, Department of Planning and Zoning. How can we plan ahead for the next 20 years? Not just for flood control, but for resiliency, for economic development, just a much broader picture. So that's going on as well. What you'll find, and we have found, is that everybody is an expert and they're not shy about telling us that. And there's no way you can make everybody happy. Some people want it done immediately. Some people want us to study it because they don't like our current plan. So just be prepared for that. Our overall plan has both short term and long term projects, and I'll talk about that shortly. And basically after, in the middle of all this, after the second storm, we had the November 2018 elections and we had a new county executive and all five members of the county council were replaced. So we had a whole new bunch of peoples that we were, we were talking with and working with. So the new executive in May 2019 announced his safe and sound plan. And it included a lot of things, not just large capital projects. It included going out after every storm where we had more than two inches of rain in 24 hours or one hour of 30 mile an hour sustained winds. We looked at key locate, key road crossings. And we have like a two or three day window to remove all the woody debris that's built up at those locations. We have five large dry flood mitigation facilities in design, which are essentially in-stream ponds. We call them dry flood mitigation facilities because the Corps of Engineers said they would not approve in-stream ponds, but they would approve dry flood mitigation facilities. So we changed the name, but they're essentially in-stream ponds. Three are currently in design, two we hope to go to construction in the next year, and two more of the designs are pending. We also have five conveyance projects to increase the capacity of roadway culverts and to convey large amounts of water under, under the town. We have a tunnel proposed that's roughly 15 feet in diameter, 1,600 feet in length. And then we have smaller culverts, both of which go under the CSX railroad, which is another speed bump in our design process. We acquired a number of buildings, most of them at the lower end of Main Street. We're planning to do some partial and complete building removal. The partial is getting the portion of the building that's over the stream, you know, out of that area, leaving the front part of the building as a viable business. Some of the considerations in the overall plan obviously are cost, I'll talk about that shortly, time. Now, how fast can we get it done? How fast should we get it done? There's obviously permitting, since we are also in a historic district, there's a lot of, you know, the Maryland Historic Trust and a lot of the local historic agencies are, are a significant part of the process. And then there's the public perception and public expectations that, as I alluded to before, is, is something that we're constantly dealing with. As far as funding considerations, the price tag was over $100 million. Now that you've picked your jaws up off the ground, that, that is our engineer's estimate based on the initial design. We, it may, it's probably going to be more than that when it's all said and done. Obviously, we don't have $100 million sitting there to spend. We do have a county watershed fee, but that's specifically targeted for our NPDES permit for water quality projects and can't be used for flood mitigation. So what we're doing, we're looking at state and federal grants. We also have our administration going to our state senators and representatives. And I don't want to say begging for money, but basically getting straight out appropriations where we don't have to apply for grants. We're using our capital budget funds to the best of our ability and, and to the best that it's actually there to spend. And we're also looking at long-term loans. Basically anything and everything that will help us pay for the projects. And that's also, the, the funding is also factoring into the time period in which we can actually get this all done. And aside from all of that, we were coming into a tough budget year aside from all the flood mitigation. And then we had the pandemic. So neither of those has really helped our cause as far as funding these projects. The purpose of this slide is primarily to say, or to show that the circles and the squares are the locations of the large capital projects. Because we have so many tributaries and areas that are, you know, providing water to the, to the downtown area, we're going to have to put projects throughout the watershed. We can't just find one project that's going to solve everything. So we're, we're having to spread the projects around. And finally, and these are mostly the short-term items that we're working on. In the meantime, while the capital projects are getting designed and built, we have a more robust flood warning and situational awareness program. We're putting up variable message signs, as you can see in this photo, just alerting people when we have flash flood watches, flash flood warnings, and when the road's just plain closed to traffic. We've put in an audible tone alert system that goes off when we have a flash flood warning. With that is an education program because in the last event that we set the alarms off, we set the alarms off six times and people were still strolling around on Main Street and the police had to escort them off. We identified high ground hubs with, along with appropriate signage. Because as, probably the same with you all, we have a lot of visitors who just aren't familiar with the area. So they can see a sign that basically has an up arrow and stairs and it points them to how to get to high ground. We currently have a stream and rain gauge system and a video network. And we're looking to enhance that and make it more resilient. After the second flood, our county council implemented a one-year moratorium on all building in the watershed, giving us a time to go back and review our design manual. What that review gave us was a, an added requirement for a high intensity, short duration storm. The Tiber watershed already required 100 year quantity control. So now we're required, anyone who develops in that watershed is also required to manage an event that's somewhere in the neighborhood of six and a half inches in two to three hours. I will point out that since this is an older, the older watershed, a lot of development went in before stormwater regulations. So now all of that is adding to, to the flooding. I mentioned, I guess a while back that we, the Corps had done a study and said that we could floodproof, dry floodproof up to two and a half to three feet. We put out a flood mitigation grant program that basically was a 50% cost share up to a certain amount for anyone in the, in the floodplain and in, in this area who wanted to put in a, a hardened door to raise their HVA system or move the electrical out of the basement. We did that last year. I think we gave out like 130 plus or minus $1,000. And that reached, I want to say, somewhere in the neighborhood of a couple dozen property owners. We're doing the same program this fiscal year and we've upped the ante to, I think around 180 to 200,000. And that's, that's it. It is a, an overview. I could probably talk for hours, which you probably don't want, but I'll be available and stick around for any questions. Thank you.
Very good. Thank you, Mark. And we appreciate your willingness to stick with us through the end. And the event council members have questions at the completion of the presentation. So next, we'll move on and let you hear from Nikki Mills, the city engineer. A lot of this terminology will become increasingly familiar to you if it, if it's not already. Nikki is going to share details with you about the Capital Improvement Plan and how it addresses the city's MS4 program, community drainage and flood management. Nikki?
Evening, Madam Mayor, members of council. Thanks for the opportunity. I'd like to point out, we've, we've got three stormwater issues. We have our MS4 obligations. We have neighborhood flooding issues. And then we have the big floods that flood the wharf. So there's kind of three facets or three prongs of stormwater issues that we have to deal with. Most of our current projects in our CIP deal with either MS4 or these neighborhood drainage problems. One of our projects, it's under design now as for the Thames, Carolina, Augusta neighborhood. Some of you may remember that getting quite a bit of attention. That project will address neighborhood flooding. That's a good example of what I like to call a conveyance project. That, does that drainage design get the water out of that neighborhood? But it'll put it in another. So that's, that's why you call that a conveyance project. It just moves the water. And that's typically been the focus of our CIP with stormwater is, is getting water out of people's neighborhood, moving it along. Our current CIP generally does not address flooding, as in the wharf. There are some projects in our CIP that provide some stormwater management as opposed to conveyance. So kind of like Mark was describing, these dry ponds attached to the creek, basically almost an inline pond. That's a management device. So it slows the water down rather than giving it to the next guy. I think I would recommend that the city pivot away from conveyance only projects and focus more on management. Reexamine and refine the approach and staff has talked a good bit among ourselves about getting a study done, you know, trying to get some direction that, that shifts the program, the CIP more toward management and away from conveyance. Again, because the conveyance projects just, just move the water on to the next place. That's all I had, unless you have further directions.
Very good. Thank you.
Thank you.
I think it's, it's interesting to observe, you heard Mark Richmond talk about the approach in, in Howard County where they're relying on a combination of conveyance systems and, and management. And from what you hear from Nikki is that perhaps we have been focused at, at one end on conveyance systems, that that's predominantly what's in the CIP. And so, you know, I, I think part of the exercise will be to determine whether to make a shift and to use more of a combined approach like, like they're using in Howard County. But all of that costs money. And so that's what Mr. Treer is here to talk to us about.
And a mayor member of the council, it's a pleasure to be back. Stormwater Fund is an enterprise fund designed to cover storm drainage projects to remain in compliance with the Environmental Protection Agency's mandate to reduce nutrient flows which find their way into the Chesapeake Bay. The fund is primarily supported by stormwater drainage fees billed semi-monthly as part of the utility billing. Annual stormwater drainage fees are budgeted at $750,000 for FY21 and are based upon an average monthly residential billing of $3.20 per month per homeowner. Slide three reviews our stormwater cash flow projections over the next five years. Based upon the current CIP plan, even with our current revenue stream, the general fund will need to support the stormwater fund by $565,000 in FY24 by providing a temporary loan to ensure the CIP plan, as approved, can be implemented. On slide four, we're sort of noting the obvious, we have limited funding options. But it does break down the stormwater fees in the valley in Charlottesville. The state average is $4.95, but that's skewed by cities like Newport News, Norfolk, Portsmouth, Falls Church, which tend to upwardly skew the state average with their double, double-digit rates. As can be seen from the slide, the valley comparison, including Charlottesville, includes Bridgewater, $2.07, Harrisonburg, $2.50, Waynesboro, $3.42, Roanoke, $5.40, Charlottesville, $5.85, and Blacksburg, $6. Slide five, we'll look at the Debt Service Sinking Fund. Without adding future CIP projects, the current Debt Service Sinking Fund is solvent and can easily sustain current obligations at its current funding levels. Future projects will require additional annual funding from the general fund into the Debt Service Fund. When the addition of the police and fire projects are layered in, the Debt Service will require an additional $700,000 a year to support these projects. Any additional major projects will require additional funding. Obviously, a combination of increased debt service and possibly a repriorization of capital projects will be required to address these stormwater issues. On slide six, over the years, the stormwater issues have competed with a never-ending list of CIP project demands. Of CIP project demands. The stormwater fees implemented by the city in 2008. Were in response to federal mandates. Current stormwater rates are not sufficient to handle flood control projects, meaning additional funding sources will be required. Sources may include increasing stormwater fees, grants, as you've heard. And debt service supported by the general fund. As a perspective, and Mr. Vaughn wanted me to make sure that nobody's recommending doubling the stormwater fees, but as a perspective. If we were to double the stormwater fees, that would handle debt service of approximately $13 million. And we have $20 million worth of unfunded, unscheduled projects primarily dealing with. Water cleansing issues and transporting the water. None of the projects. Are designed to specifically address the flooding, the flooding issues we experienced in August. Of this year. And again, just a reminder, Ellicott City was looking at $100 million plus. And I believe that's the the end of my presentation to give you an overview as to. Where we're at on a financial situation. It's going to require more resources. So. Okay.
Thank you.
Next, we'll hear from Rebecca Joyce with the Central Shenandoah Planning District Commission. And she will share with us some of the details of grant. And funding programs, some of which may be used in Howard County. But may provide options here for us in Stanton. Rebecca?
Madam Mayor and council members, thank you for letting me speak to you all tonight. Mr. Rosenberg asked me to put together some information for you all about different possibilities for grants for doing flood mitigation. Our office has assisted localities for about 25 years in doing flood mitigation work. And so I've included some information that you all have in your packets. On some federal and state programs and resources that we have. I did just want to mention to you all tonight, a new program that FEMA is initiating that. All of us in the flood mitigation world are very excited about. Because it's offering more money to the localities and allowing for more types of activities in the projects. The new program is called the BRIC program, which stands for Building Resilient Infrastructure in Communities. And it's replacing a program called the Pre Disaster Mitigation Program. Which primarily in its beginning really focused on residential properties and elevating and relocating those. The Building Resilient Communities Program, the BRIC program is really. Working on how to address those flooding issues with the community and projects that can be community wide. That can help resolve those issues. The exciting thing is not only is it funding just the mitigation part. It's actually funding things like engineering studies and mitigation plans. And capacity and capability building to get you in the right place so that when you do your mitigation. You're able to use your resources most effectively. You can also build on, if you were to apply for that money for a plan or engineering study or those kinds of things. You can turn right around and then apply for funding to do the mitigation project. So not only can you be able to figure out what you need. Then you can apply to be able to do that work down the road. That that money is also increasing every year compared to the old programs. And this year, the competitive across the country program will be $446 million. Which is is a good chunk of money for mitigation work. So we just wanted to let you all know that there are federal state programs out there and then other resources as well. Usually to address such a complex issue as flooding, you need kind of a cobblestone patchwork approach to be able to address that. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Rebecca. So to to. Attempt to tie all of this together for you. Let me just share some thoughts about what we're doing currently and what we will continue to do in the short term. You heard Mark talk a little bit about, you know, what they're what they're doing in the short term. You know, while they're waiting for these larger projects to come to fruition. Even in the aftermath of our first event on August 8th, we had public works crews out in field. Doing some of the difficult work and they will continue to troubleshoot our existing system. Such as it is cleaning storm drain inlets, pipes and culverts. And clearing debris and removing obstructions from creeks. And I think I've shared with you previously that. In some instances, Pete Kessinger actually. Walked some of these waterways with some of the property owners in the city. In an effort to get the benefit of their thoughts about what may have been some trouble spots in in one or both of the recent events. We will also continue to repair or replace burns that have been damaged in the August events. We also will be stressing preparedness and you heard Mark talk about this, you know, they have. Developed a more robust flood warning and situational awareness system. And some of what we will be doing and what we intend to do is along the same lines. We'll focus on our communications using the city's website. Email, Facebook and the Stanton Alert Message System in order to push out. Information when we find ourselves facing the potential for these sorts of events. You saw us do some sandbag distribution. It seemed in the days after the August 8th event, we were continually under a flash flood watch. And so on, on more than one occasion, public works. Mobilized in order to distribute the materials for for sandbags. And that's the sort of preparedness initiative that can continue in the right circumstances. We've been engaged with the property owners whose properties are equipped with the flood shields. That were funded by grants obtained, a grant obtained by the city in the aftermath of the 2003 event. In order to make everybody aware that they have the flood shields and to encourage their use in the appropriate circumstances. And we've also had some discussion about imposing parking restrictions. When we have sufficient advanced warning of these events. So that individuals don't wind up with their cars parked in the wharf parking lot only to be flooded. In terms of next steps. You you heard Rebecca talk about the availability of grant funding under the BRIC program. For for engineering studies or flood mitigation studies. And I suggest to you that staff will begin working on preparation of a scope for such a study. Which would eventually result in the engagement of a consultant and a completion of a study. And then further down the road, we would wind up with. A series of consultant recommended measures to be taken. And and those would be given consideration and of course, given the the financial constraints that you heard. Phil addressed, this would all likely require the development of a new fiscal approach in order to to finance. Projects of a sufficient scope to have a positive impact. And again, to underscore. You know, Mark's point, they're talking about $100 million worth of projects. I'm gonna. I have some familiarity with Howard County. It's it's right up there with Montgomery County, Maryland, in the DC area in terms of its fiscal condition. My guess is it probably has a AAA bond rating. Is that right, Mark?
Yes.
And so it's a locality, part of the Baltimore, Washington metropolitan area that. Frankly and candidly, has some resources available to it that we do not have here in Stanton. And so, you know, if $100 million is a significant load for Howard County. It's a sobering thought for us to consider how we would address the situation that we have here in Stanton. So with that, I think we probably have a good 10 minutes for your questions for any of the presenters this evening. And we certainly are able and willing to come back at a subsequent work session to continue a conversation with council on this subject.
Thank you. This was very informative. Are there any questions or comments by council members?
Madam Mayor.
Vice Mayor Robertson.
Mark, I'm just, I'm curious, when you mentioned, how? How was the congressional, how was it received when you went to your, to the congressmen, to the senators? I mean, were they, is that, I mean, were they at all receptive to that at all?
They were very receptive. It it helped that one of them actually lives in Ellicott City. And used to be on the county council. So she was very familiar with it, but I mean, we were received very well. But there's just so much money to go around. It's certainly not as much as we needed, but they did look upon it favorably.
Okay.
Right, Councilman Claffey.
Mark, thank you very much for all your information. What was the first thing that is on your master plan? What was the? What went to the top of your list? What were we going to do first?
Well, there's, well, I guess for clarification that there's the master plan, which is a a planning and zoning document. Which actually hasn't been approved yet. It's still in the finalization stage. And I'm, I'm not in DPZ, so I'm not sure what's going to rise to the top. That's more of a. I guess a blueprint for how to move forward. If you're talking about our, our, I guess, our H and H modeling and our H and H plan. We had several projects that were already in design, so those are moving forward first. The, our tunnel is basically, the two big tunnel projects are probably the biggest, going to have the best and biggest impact. So we're concentrating on those. But, so I'm not sure if that answers your question, or if you were thinking more of the master planning, which I'm not as familiar with.
Well, I know you were faced with a daunting scenario as we are. We're just interested in your input and the fact that you you've been where we need to be. You're a couple of steps ahead of us, unfortunately.
Right. Well, having the, having the hydrology and hydraulic study was, I mean, that's the, that's the first and probably most important thing. That'll, that'll define what you can and can't do technically. And then it's a matter of figuring out priorities and funding and, you know. Kind of sequencing of projects. But having that overall plan, I mean, that basically told us what's what's our bottom line. And then it's figuring out priority wise how we get there, both technically and financially.
Mark, this is Steve Rosenberg. You know, we're in a different market. The watersheds may not be the same. Scott size, so the scope of the project might be different, but.
Right.
What did you all pay for your H and H study?
Oh, well, it's, I'll say it's still ongoing because we keep having people ask, can you check this? Can you check that? But I will, I will say it's probably over 200,000, 250,000.
Thank you.
I can, if if you need a better number, I can go back and check tomorrow and email it to you, but I think that's kind of a ballpark number.
Thank you.
Mr. Rosenberg, I have a question, and maybe it's for Ms. Joyce. But in regards to, when you mentioned consultants moving forward. Or is that including possibly something with the Silver Jacket Team, Army Corps of Engineers? Or is that something separate that you would have to look at through the grant she was speaking of?
Yeah, I think that a consultant to conduct the sort of study. That we would contemplate. Would would be hopefully grant funded and the Silver Jacket Team, and I'm going to look to Mr. Glover here. Would probably come into play at the point after we've received the study. And we're endeavoring to prioritize projects and make decisions about what fits best for the city of Stanton. And and that team would be in a position to lend its assistance to help the city. Evaluate options and make those decisions.
Yes, that's correct, Steve. Yeah, they would come in later and provide advice. It's a, it's the Silver Jackets, a group of professionals.
John, come up here so the other council members can hear, please.
Sorry, I'm opposed to yelling back there, but Silver Jackets, it's a team of representatives of FEMA. Army Corps of Engineers, many different groups. And they are experienced in all things related to flood mitigation. So they would mainly provide technical advice as far as prioritizing projects. They may even be able to help with strategies for funding projects also, because they've been there before. So that's kind of assistance they would provide.
Thank you. Are there any additional questions or comments?
This is Brenda Mead. I have a question.
Councilwoman Mead.
Yeah, I was, I was just wondering if Nikki or Mr. Richmond. Could respond to this, but is there a role for individual homeowners? And businesses to play in this sort of flood mitigation? I don't mean, I don't, I don't mean a significant role, but just a way for members of the community to feel as if they were. Participating, you know, doing something other than paying a stormwater fee. And and, you know, there are small things that homeowners can do like, like rain gardens and. And and. You know, collecting stormwater and those sorts of things. And I know they won't. Prevent, you know, a six and a half inch rainfall in two hours type flood, but. But is that something you're looking at? In Ellicott City, for instance?
We are doing the rain gardens and the rain barrels and and you're correct, if you get six and a half inches of rain. That's probably six inches of rain more than those facilities can handle in a short period of time.
Right.
So, but we're still doing, we're still doing those projects. So yeah, I hear what you're saying. But when you get that much rain, it really is a, it's large capital projects that are going to deal with it. I think for the, for the business owners and the property owners, at least the ones that are in the floodplain and could be flooded. It's just being aware, having a plan for the businesses. For some of our businesses during the first flood. They had employees that couldn't get out. And their way out was a door in the upstairs in the back that was nailed shut. So it's having a plan and having an education program. You know, having the the three foot high floodgate and, you know, setting that up and. I think it's, it's, that's where they can help themselves. And then help others, you know, if it's a restaurant, knowing what to do with the people that are there. So that's, that's kind of their, their role, I guess.
Thank you. I was in Ellicott City about three weeks before that flood in 2016. I was horrified at the pictures that I saw in the newspaper. So I'm very sorry your community had to endure that.
Well, thank you.
Right, Councilman Holmes.
Mark, I'm pretty familiar with Ellicott City too. I used to live in Catonsville. And I was just curious, how much water accumulated? How fast did it accumulate? There, because I was under the impression it came up pretty fast.
Yes, it came up fast and kept coming up. I, yeah, I don't have the exact timing, but it was. I mean, it was like a matter of an hour or so to from, until we, I think, until we hit our peak, but. You know, I, as an example, I live. Probably 10 minutes away from our emergency management, our EOC. And as soon as I realized that there was a serious problem, I hopped in my car to drive over there. And it, it took me probably between a half hour and hour to get there because roads were closed, roads were underwater. I was being redirected by the police to routes that were also underwater. Unbeknownst to them, so it did come up real quickly. That's, that's part of our situational awareness, just because it happened so fast. We've been working very, very closely with the National Weather Service. Back in the day, they'd issue warnings for Howard County in general. They then went to Eastern Howard County and Western Howard County. They have now actually zeroed in on, they will give alerts for historical. They have now actually zeroed in on, they will give alerts for historic Ellicott City just because it's such an isolated area and it's such a high profile area. So they've been very helpful. Quite honestly, we're just a lot more nervous and we're paying a lot more attention. And actually, if you were watching me not paying attention to you all and looking at my phone, it's because it's raining here right now, or, or at least it was. And I was just looking at, you know, things from our Bureau of Highways, from our police chief, fire chief, just, you know, the reports that were coming in. So we're just, as a county, we're a lot more aware. But yeah, it's, it, it happens extremely quickly. And, you know, it's, it's a relatively small area. And when that much water drops that quickly, it doesn't take long, you know, to fill up the streams and to, to get out of bank.
I'd like to thank everyone for presenting tonight. Each and every one of you brought very informative and valuable information to the table. I'd also like to thank Mr. Richmond for joining us. I think the city council might need to make a road trip to Ellicott City. And you are always welcome in Stanton. So thank you very much.
Thanks. If you come up, I can, I can arrange to have you meet with whoever you want to meet with.
That, that sounds lovely. Thank you.
At a six foot distance.
In our Stanton mask. All right, with that, we are on break. Thank you. Okay, we're back from break. And the next item on the agenda is item number four, an update on U.S. Environmental Protection Agency, EPA Brownfields Program Grant. Mr. Rosenberg.
Mayor Oaks, this is Brenda Mead. I hate to interrupt, but I wanted to point out that I was not present for the roll call. But I was present at the consideration of the meeting agendas. I just want to make sure that's noted in the minutes of the meeting.
We, we did. We noted that you are present. Okay, Mr. Rosenberg.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Our Economic Development and Community Development Director, Billy Vaughn, will present this item.
Madam Mayor, members of council, we're here this evening to provide a brief update on efforts to carry out council's desire to prepare a strategy to revitalize the West End of the city. As you're aware, we've been, we're moving into our second year of this effort. And part of this is a goal to submit an application for an EPA Brownfields grant. A key person who's been sort of shepherding this effort on behalf of the city and city council is Lori Crowe with Draper Aiden. And at this point, I will turn it over to Lori to give you a brief updating overview of our past efforts and how we plan to move forward.
Thank you, Mr. Vaughn. Good evening, Mayor Oaks, distinguished council members. Thank you so much for having me back again tonight. It's always a pleasure being beautiful downtown Stanton. Just to provide you a bit of background, as you know, we've been working with the city for a couple of years toward development of a, an EPA Brownfields grant for funding to address abandoned, underutilized properties throughout the target area that we've identified as West End of the city. We were set to submit this application or proposal last fall, if you may recall. But at the time, we felt that it wasn't quite strong enough because we didn't have planning efforts in place for West End. So we approached council about postponing that application in, in anticipation of creating a true community-led effort there on West End. We had planned several meetings in order to develop a preliminary revitalization plan for the area. The first meeting was scheduled on March 24th. And so, you know, what happened? We postponed that meeting. We were fortunate that last week, on last Thursday, we could go tonight, we did have an in-person meeting at Gypsy Hill Park Gym. About 33 people attended that meeting. We were very pleased with the turnout. That did include some council members as well as some staff members and guests. Altogether, we had over 20, maybe two dozen interested and eager citizens that were involved in that effort. They were very, very gracious and vocal and pleased that council has decided to really target that area now for some revitalization efforts. So it was a terrific meeting. They gave us some good ideas and some great history lessons about the West End with plans to continue those efforts. Our next meeting, this was more or less a kickoff meeting, an introductory meeting to introduce them to the grant idea, how that money, those monies can be utilized to help redevelopment in that area. The West End, as we are defining it for this effort, is the city's two opportunity zones, which are bordered by Churchville on the north, Middlebrook on the south, and bisected by West Beverly all the way to the parkway. So it's, it's a very large area. One interesting thing that came out in this meeting was that one of the citizens pointed out, West End is not one neighborhood. It's 15 connected neighborhoods. So that, that helps us tell the story of West End and how it developed over time. And I think that some of the ideas that they gave us for the way they would like to see this effort go forward were very valuable. We will be having a second meeting with them on October 1st. Again, we hope to have that in person. And hopefully, we can do some more sort of group efforts to, to bring out more ideas there. The EPA grant proposal is due on October 28th this year. That's the deadline for the rental. We will not have the revitalization plan in place in advance of that application and proposal. However, we will have enough information and we can state in the proposal that we are working toward that effort and it would be completed before this grant is awarded. So we plan to have the meeting in October and then perhaps two more meetings, perhaps in December and maybe in January, just depending on the timing and how often folks want to get together so that we can have a, a plan in place to review with you as soon as four, five months from now, we hope. Can I answer any questions for you?
Thank you. Are there any questions? Councilman Holmes.
Yes, ma'am. What were some of the ideals that the people presented?
One of the things that, that I think will be very helpful for that area, one of the citizens pointed out that when you pull off the Parkway on West Beverly, one of the first things you see is a sign pointing to downtown, historic downtown. Nothing about West End is there. So one of the ideas was to create a branding campaign for West End and come up with some sort of a catchy neighborhood idea. West End, Wild and Woolly, you know, welcome home to West End, something like Wild and Woolly. Yeah. But, but to create a sense of place for that area that ties together the history of the area as well as the, the ideas behind the redevelopment. We didn't get too much into specific redevelopment or revitalization ideas that's going to come in, in subsequent meetings. But I, they were just, just very vocal and positive and felt great about this effort and were appreciative of council focusing on West End.
Any additional questions or comments? All right, Mr. Vaughn.
I just want to say that we'll be back before you on the 24th for approval for the submission of the Brownfields grant.
Okay, great. Sounds good. All right, thank you very much. All right, the next item that was added to the agenda, the work session agenda, it's item number five, the discussion of Zoom meetings. Mr. Rosenberg, did you have anything to state concerning this issue?
No, Madam Mayor, I was not aware that it would be added to the agenda. And so I'm not quite certain what the, what the purpose of the discussion is.
All right. Are there any concerns or questions or staff, by any council members?
Madam Mayor.
Councilman Claffey.
I would like to know how, how much longer we're going to have to continue to use the Zoom format for city council meetings. It's, it's a little bit difficult. It's hard not to have everyone on the dais together for discussion's sake. And it's also, um, difficulty when we, when we get to the end of the meetings for matters from the general public, you know, the phone calls coming in. It's hard to hear. The vocals quality is not that good. And I, I think we might have a better working space if we were all to be here in person. Certainly appreciate those who have come, and we have most of the city staff here tonight. And it's great for Zoom to be able to talk to somebody from Ellicott City, Maryland, from a distance. But I, I think maybe it's time that Stanton City Council get together and, and stop with this Zoom format and let's meet in person. I noticed the school board is meeting in person.
Madam Mayor, now that, now that I understand the, the general parameters of the discussion, let me just make a couple of observations that might inform your discussions. First of all, the school board comprises five members, whereas city council is seven members. So I have concerns about how we accommodate all the seven council members in chambers.
School board's six.
I'm sorry, thank you. And we, and we've had communications with Dr. Carnegie, with the Central Shenandoah Health District about the setup on the dais and the possible use of Plexiglas dividers. Mr. Claffey's a big fan of those, I know. But even with the, and I'm happy to share with my exchange with her, with you all. She, in, in her opinion, does not believe that that is an effective protective measure for an extended duration. You, you see them throughout city hall. And in that sort of a setting where there's a short interaction between a customer and city staff, it, it provides some measure of protection. But according to Dr. Carnegie, for use over an extended period of time, not so much. So, you know, some, those of you who were on council before the pandemic or at the, at the beginning of the pandemic will recall that we had five members seated at the dais as we do this evening. And then I think we had two members seated in the front row and maybe, or maybe one at Mr. Gwynn's seat. And so, you know, if it was council's desire to come back in chambers, we would be looking, I think, at an arrangement quite similar to that. If it was the desire to come back physically, my recommendation would actually be that it be in another venue. And perhaps that's the wear cafeteria, and I'm not talking about using the stage at the cafeteria. I'm talking about using the cafeteria floor so that council members can be appropriately distanced and, and every council member could be appropriately distanced without, you know, some seated on the dais and some seated at, at other locations in, in chambers. So anyway, those are my two thoughts. One, the input from Dr. Carnegie, and two, I think the limitations of this space.
Is there any, is there any legal problems with moving city council meetings to a alternate location?
Mr. Gwynn tells me no. We would have to notice it appropriately, but it can be done.
Vice Mayor Robertson.
My only problem, I, I, I want, I want this to end sooner than later. I, I will say that. I, you know, I want us all back together. I want us back to a sense of normality. But I will come down a little bit. I am not at the point where I am wanting, I know Ms. Mead and, and Ms. Doll, you know, have their reasons. And, and, and I don't want them to do anything that they feel like they would maybe hurting, putting their, their life in jeopardy or their loved ones in jeopardy. So, I mean, I'm not at the point where I say, okay, I want you back here right now. But the only thing I have a problem with is, Ms. Mead, I want to thank you for having your face there. I can see it. I, I can see if you're angry at me and, and/or not, or whatever. And I'm hoping that continues into the full meeting. But Ms. Doll, I'm sorry, but looking at that blank, black screen right there from that, from now on and until in the meeting, it's just, you know, I, I, I don't think that's meeting everything that we need to do. I mean, I know that you're a council member and I want to see you.
Councilman Holmes.
Yes, I tell you, I've, I have the, I have no excuse for not being here because I'm exposed to a number of people every day. But if I had my choice, I would much rather do it on Zoom. And I mean, you know, I just don't have a, I don't have anything to stand by. And I know if somebody's, you know, this thing hasn't gotten better. It hasn't gotten any worse. But if you look at, if you look at Harrisonburg, they just had 800 cases at J and M. I mean, now, I mean, and you know, and I mean, it could, it could, you know, you don't want to, if you're, if you've got any kind of health issues or worried about it, you know, I mean, I can understand why somebody wouldn't want to be here. And I haven't seen any major problems in the way we're doing our, our council. You know, I mean, I, I just, I, I think that it's working fine now. And if we go to another school, then we might have to pack up all this equipment and set up there. How much, how much of a pain in the butt is that going to be to have to move everything from here? I just don't, I don't, I just don't see, I don't see that it's a major flaw. That's just my opinion.
Madam Mayor.
Councilwoman Darby.
Is there anything that, from a, Mr. Gwynn could answer it from a legal standpoint in regards to the screens? I mean, I feel like I saw something in the news, but I can't recall it specifically where in order for like votes to be cast, you, you have to be visible on the screen. Is that, does, does anybody know what I'm talking about in that regard? Has, has you seen that information? I saw it in regards to the General Assembly when they... Thank you.
Okay. Are there any additional comments, questions? Mr. Gwynn, if you could research that. We want to make sure that everyone's vote counts and that it's all verified. So, all right. With that, we are now on break. That concludes the work session. We will come back into the regular meeting at 7:30. So, did you have something?
No.
All right. You were, you were looking at me like you wanted to say something.
I'm good. Thank you.
All right. So with that, we're, the work session meeting is adjourned.
Hey, as mayor, I call this meeting of Stanton City Council to order. I note that this meeting is being broadcast over the city's cable channel and streamed live on the city's website so that members of the public may hear our meeting. The meeting is also being recorded. I ask the clerk of council to call the roll for confirmation of those council members present for today's meeting.
Mayor Oaks.
Present.
Ms. Darby.
Here.
Mr. Holmes.
Here.
Mr. Claffey.
Here.
Vice Mayor Robertson.
Here.
Ms. Doll.
Here.
Ms. Mead.
Here.
I've confirmed that all council members are present.
All right, thank you. I ask that the city manager, Steve Rosenberg, note the participation of any city council officials, colleagues, or anyone else during today's meeting by Zoom or telephone.
Madam Mayor, council members Doll and Mead are participating on the Zoom platform. In addition, we will be joined on the Zoom platform by David Morgan, Trayford McCray, and Sarah Holberg at different points during the meeting.
All right, thank you. Please let me mention that notice reasonable under the circumstances of this meeting has been given to the public contemporaneously with the notice provided to members of city council.
to members of city council. In addition to limited public seating in city hall, access to this meeting has been provided to the public by audio feed on the city's cable channel and the city's website. During public hearings towards the beginning of the meeting and matters from the public on council's agenda, towards the end of the meeting, public comments will be taken in person and by telephone. Members of the public who wish to participate in such matters by telephone, at the appropriate time, they call 844-854-2222. And when prompted, enter the access code 619358 hashtag. Callers will be recognized in order. The public is reminded that public hearings and matters from the public is a time for council simply to listen to your comments. Each speaker will be limited to five minutes. Detailed instructions for public participation by telephone have been publicized over the course of the past week on the city's website and Facebook page and can be found now on the agenda for this meeting and on council's website at www.ci.stanton.v.a.us backslash government backslash city dash council. Also, let me highlight and have reflected in the meeting minutes that this meeting, although being conducted in person, is also being conducted by Zoom with virtual participation of certain members of city council, given the cast catastrophic nature of the declared emergency and disaster related to the COVID-19 outbreak, which is part of the total circumstances, makes it impractical or unsafe to assemble in a single location. The meeting is being held consistent with the city council ordinance 2020 dash 04 regarding continuity of government, a copy of which can be found online at www.stanton.v.a.us backslash C-O-G-O-R-D 2020 dash 04. Um, with that said, I'd also like to comment about masks. When you are, um, coming into this, uh, city hall, into the chambers, uh, sitting out in the audience, if you can keep your mask on at all times, except, uh, if you come up to the microphone to speak, feel free to remove your mask. And we do provide sanitary wipes if you care to wipe the, uh, mic down before and after you speak. Also with, uh, city council members, uh, if you could please recognize the mayor and I will recognize you in order to speak and be heard. Uh, the next item on the agenda is the pledge of allegiance. If you would care, please join me.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay. The next item on the agenda is the invocation moment of silence. And tonight it is Councilwoman Mead's turn. Councilwoman?
Yes, thank you. I'd like to share these words from the great late, uh, Representative John Lewis. Do not get lost in a sea of despair. Do not become bitter, bitter or hostile. Be hopeful. Be optimistic. Never ever be afraid to make some noise and get in good trouble, necessary trouble. We will find a way to make a way out of no way. Thank you.
Thank you. The next item is the mayor's report. I have a proclamation to read concerning Constitution Week. City of Stanton, Virginia proclamation, Constitution Week, September 17th through the 23rd, 2020. Whereas September 17th, 2020 marks the 233rd anniversary of the drafting of the Constitution of the United States of America by the Constitutional Convention. And whereas it is fitting and proper to officially recognize the patriotic celebrations which will commemorate this occasion. And whereas public law 9, 915 guarantees the issuing of a proclamation each year by the President of the United States of America designating September 17th through 23rd as Constitution Week. Now therefore be it proclaimed by Stanton City Council that September 17th through 23rd, 2020 is hereby designated as Constitution Week. And the city of Stanton and all of the city's citizens are asked to reaffirm the ideals established by the farmers of the Constitution in 1787, adopted this 10th day of September, 2020. Andrea W. Oaks, Mayor. And I believe we have some guests from the DAR here to accept the proclamation. We have Helen Willard, the region and chair of the Constitution Week Committee, um, Colonial Thomas Hugert Chapter NSDAR, and Helen Wilder will accept for Augusta Parish Chapter NSDAR. We have Mary Ann Stripling, the registrar, Beverly Manor Chapter NSDAR. And I believe you would like to say a few words. Welcome.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Beverly Manor Chapter chartered right down the road at Stewart House on Church Street in 1893 by 12 ladies, one of whom was Mary Julia Baldwin. Thanks you and council for this proclamation and for supporting the U.S. Constitution.
Thank you.
Madam Mayor.
Yes.
It's always a privilege to come before you and report to you the Constitution Week activities that, uh, happened in our schools. On behalf of the members of Colonel Thomas Hugert Chapter, I do thank you for this opportunity to address you. It is a pleasure to report to you the 2019, 2020 activities of this chapter's Constitution Week Committee. Two schools participated in activities, Bessie Weller Elementary School and Stanton High School. Mary Heisman, technology specialist at Bessie Weller, worked with students to produce a Constitution Week video, Happy Birthday Constitution. It was broadcast at the school and it was posted on YouTube. This production won several state awards. Twenty-three Constitution Week kits filled with materials and information used by the students of the school during Constitution Week were distributed to teachers in grades kindergarten through fifth grade. Happy Birthday Constitution cards were signed by students and these cards were sent to military personnel to thank them for what they're doing to protect our constitutional rights. Once again, Jen Goss at Stanton High School worked with her students to participate in the Constitution Week poster contest. Forty-six of her students participated and three posters submitted placed second, third, and honorable mention at the state level. Constitution letters from the governor, two senators, and Stanton's mayor were given to the schools for use with their, by their students. Downtown businesses posted Constitution Week posters and the mayor of Stanton authorized the flying of American flags on Beverly Street on Constitution Day. It is with regret that these activities in the schools this year have basically been eliminated. However, Ms. Hash, uh, Heisman was given another script for a video and we might, she might do something, we don't know. And Jim Goss is making attempts to involve students in the poster contest. I'm thrilled to be here this evening to accept the mayor's Constitution Week proclamation. And it is my understanding that the American flags will fly on Beverly Street on Constitution Day and perhaps for the entire week. A copy of the mayor's proclamation will be emailed to the principals of Bessie Weller Elementary and Stanton High School with the request that teachers electronically share this with the students of the school. Stanton businesses will be contacted again and asked to display posters and local churches have been contacted to participate in the Bells Across America, ringing bells at four o'clock on Constitution Day. Again, thank you for this opportunity. And if I may approach.
Yes, ma'am.
Let me mask up again.
The new norm.
I would like to give each of the council members a poster.
Thank you.
These are going to be cut up and given to the elementary children to create puzzles. So now it is your job to find a place to post these posters for City of U.A. Constitution Week.
Can we cut them up and make puzzles?
I got a place right away. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you so much. It's very much an honor to have all of you here tonight. And thank you for everything you do. Okay. All right. So the next item on the agenda is the additional items by members of council. Are there any additional items by members of council?
Mayor Oaks.
Councilwoman Holmes.
Uh, yes, uh, a couple of things. One is, uh, earlier discussion about having everybody here in the room. Uh, I kind of think that the way y'all presented it on the, on our agenda was, we, it was not very good. You gave it, you didn't give us any notice. You put it on there without us knowing about it until we walked into the room. And then you took another item off the, off the thing about the parade. You took that off the thing again without notifying us. And how do you expect us to work together when you, when you're basically doing these things without telling us? I mean, it, it's, it's very aggravating to come in here thinking you're going to talk about one thing and then all of a sudden you get something different. And I've been trying to work with everybody here. And I tell you, it makes it really hard when you do things that like this, that, that makes, it makes it hard to work together, you know? And I'm just, I mean, it just upsets me. I mean, I've been over here shaking ever since we had this stuff come up, you know? And I, I just think it's really just, I just think it's very unprofessional.
All right. Are there any additional items by members of council?
Madam Mayor.
Councilman Claffey.
The nominations committee had the opportunity to meet yesterday and, uh, that's consisting of Vice Mayor Robertson and Councilwoman Darby. And we, uh, we'd like to make a motion at tonight's meeting for two appointments to the Ag Forest Advisory Committee to appoint Stephen Bean for an unlimited term beginning September 11th, 2020, and for the Joint IDA of the County of Stafford and the City of Stanton to appoint Zachary Long to fill the unexpired term of Ray Griffin, beginning September 11th, 2020 and expiring June 30th, 2021.
All right. And that's put in a form of a motion. It's coming from a committee. We do not need a second. Is there any further discussion? Ms. Simmons, please call the roll.
Mayor Oaks.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Robertson.
Aye.
Ms. Mead.
Aye.
Mr. Holmes.
Aye.
Mr. Claffey.
Aye.
Ms. Doll.
Aye.
Ms. Darby.
Aye.
Motion carries.
All right. The next item on the agenda?
This is Carolyn Doll. I, I have, uh, some items. First, I'd like to, uh, let everyone know that Governor Northam has declared the week of September 13th through 19th as Virginia's CPA Week. I don't suppose, uh, we CPAs will ever get a proclamation, but we can just, uh, celebrate amongst ourselves that week. And the other item I have is a letter I wanted to read. And this, uh, this is, uh, as a city of Stanton citizen, I noticed that a special parade was held on the Fourth of July by the newly elected mayor, Andrea Oaks, and organized by the newly elected council member, Amy Darby, with Mr. Robertson and Mr. Claffey participating. I understand that this was held only in certain neighborhoods in Stanton in which the Stanton Police Department and the Stanton Fire Department were participants. I was under the assumption that all Fourth of July activities in the city of Stanton were canceled due to COVID-19. And watching the video and seeing pictures of the special parade on Ms. Darby's and Ms. Oaks' Facebook sites, it seemed to be a relatively small crowd of people involved, which leads me to believe that this was not an actual city of Stanton event where all citizens were invited to participate, even though taxpayers' funds were used to pay the police department and the fire department. Instead, it looked more like a custom-designed photo op for our new mayor and the other three new members of city council. Did the police department and fire department employees receive overtime pay for this? They should have, having to participate in a special parade on the Fourth of July during a pandemic. In looking at comments on Ms. Darby's and Ms. Oaks' Facebook pages and questions regarding the other three council members that were not present, they were unaware of the special parade until the morning it was held. As a citizen, I'm expressing my concerns and disappointment in how this event took place. Why was there a special parade held using taxpayers' dollars and only privileged people knew about it? How were the citizens of the city informed of this taxpayer-supported event? Was it only the friends of the four participating city council members who were notified of it? Why weren't all the citizens of the city of Stanton informed of this event so that they too could participate? What was the special parade's route? What neighborhoods were included and which sections of town were excluded? Who determined this? Why were the other council members not informed of this until the day of the event? Is this how the newly elected council members are going to conduct events and happenings for the city of Stanton, secretively and for their benefit only? I think the city of Stanton citizens are smarter and more intelligent than this, and we will be watching. I am unable to sign this letter as I am an employee with the city of Stanton. And considering how the newly elected mayor just pulled off a taxpayer parade for her personal benefit and enjoyment, I am afraid she will have me fired for calling her and the newly elected council members out on this. Instead, I ask that you respond to these questions publicly. This was the item that was removed by the four members of council earlier. And, uh, I'm going to request that it be added to every agenda until we actually have this discussion. Because I do believe in transparency and I would hope that you did too. And this isn't the only citizen who has, uh, asked about this.
All right. Are there any additional items by council members?
Mayor Oaks.
Councilwoman Darby.
I would just like to, uh, encourage everyone to take a moment tomorrow and remember, uh, the horrendous, um, day that happened to our country 19 years ago. And then, you know, think about on Saturday how we all felt 19 years ago. We were united and, and how strong we were together. Thank you.
All right. All right. Um, I would also like to make a comment. I'd like to welcome school board member Bob Boyle. Thank you for attending tonight's city council meeting. All right. The next item on the agenda is the approval of minutes for the work session and regular meeting of August 27th, 2020. I'll entertain a motion for approval.
Madam Mayor.
Councilwoman Darby.
I move to approve the work session and regular meeting minutes of August 27th, 2020.
We have a motion on the floor. Is there a second?
Second.
We have a second by Vice Mayor Robertson. Any further discussion?
Yes, this is Carolyn Doll.
Yes.
I would like to, uh, address, uh, line 544 where the minutes from the, uh, regular meeting say Mayor Oaks called Ms. Doll out of order. Um, I know that gives you a lot of pleasure anytime you can do that, but you need to be saying why I'm out of order. Because I was not in fact out of order. But I would also want the minute.
Order. Do you have a?
I want the minutes to reflect anytime you call me out of order, the reason.
27, 2020. If not, then Ms. Simmons, please call the roll.
Mr. Holmes.
Aye.
Ms. Darby.
Aye.
Ms. Doll.
No.
Mayor Oaks.
Aye.
Ms. Mead.
Aye.
Mr. Claffey.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Robertson.
Aye.
Motion carries.
All right. So the next item on the agenda for the regular meeting is agenda item A. This is a public hearing in consideration of a request by David Morgan for a special use permit for 271 North Lewis Street for the construction of an accessory residential structure on property zone B2, General Business District. Mr. Rosenberg.
Madam Mayor, members of council Rodney Rhodes, the city's senior planner, will present this item.
Thank you.
Good evening, Mayor Oaks, city council members. Uh, Dr. David Morgan is the owner of 271 North Lewis Street. This is- This is also his residence. And as the mayor noted in the introduction, he is requesting a special use permit for an accessory structure. This property is Zone B2, General Business District. And as you recall from your last meeting, we had a similar request. Residential use is not permitted on the ground floor and the commercial district unless you receive a special use permit. So that is why he's going through this process. Dr. Morgan has owned this property and in 2012 was granted a special use permit to establish, to reestablish the use of the structure as a single-family dwelling. It appears that it was originally constructed as a single-family dwelling 100-plus years ago. It had been converted into multifamily units. And then when he purchased it with the special use permit, was able to reestablish it as a single-family dwelling. At this point, he is requesting a 12-foot by 16-foot accessory building. It's a shed, one of these pre-built sheds that he liked to put behind property, behind the pool. If you looked at photos in the briefing or pinbox property, his property is on Lewis Street and also, also on Central Avenue. And this would be on the Central Avenue side of the property. Staff has reviewed this. The only concern the staff came up with is this is in the floodplain. And although a 12-by-16 foot shed does not require a building permit, if this is approved, the special use permit is approved by council, he will still have to comply with the applicable requirements of the Building Code regarding constructing in a floodplain and floodway. And it's my understanding he has already reached out to the building official to find out what those requirements would be. The property to the north, south, and east is also Zone B2, General Business District. This property is adjacent to the Howard Johnson Express Inn. The property across the street is Zone P1, Professional District. And I would note that this property is subject to a 2010 conservation easement that easement required several things of the outcome, including removing a bunch of impervious surface, which he has removed. And also specify that any new accessory structures or impervious surface would have to be 30 feet back from the center of that creek, and that this would meet that setback requirement. So staff has no issues with that. This property is in an entrance corridor. However, as a residential structure, it is not subject to that review of those requirements. The planning commission conducted a public hearing on August 20th, 2020. During the public hearing, no one spoke in opposition to the request. On a five-zero vote, the commission voted unanimously to recommend approval of the special use permit with the following condition, and that is the location, as well as construction of the building, must comply with the provisions of the Virginia Uniformed Statewide Building Code as well as the Stanton City Code, Section 18.170, Floodplain Districts and Regulations. I would note that this public hearing, as the planning commission public hearing, was duly advertised. And also notices were going, went out to all the joining property owners for both of these public hearings. I received one phone call regarding this request. And once I, that was from a joining property owner. And once I explained what the request was, he had no concerns with it. I'd be glad answering questions council has at this time or after the public hearing. I understand that Dr. Morgan is participating by Zoom tonight.
Are there any questions? Councilman Holmes.
Yeah. Rodney, is there a way to anchor that thing down? So if we do have another flood, it wouldn't end up floating away? I, I don't know how, I don't, I don't know how they normally mount those things on the ground and stuff like that. Do you build a foundation and set it on it or?
Yeah. I, I'm not going to play the part of the building official. However, I am certain that that is one of the requirements of, of building in the floodway.
Vice Mayor Robertson.
And Rodney, this may be a question for Doug, and maybe it's Mr. Gwen, our city attorney. By any chance, I mean, this may be crazy, but since we're issuing, if we so vote, a special use permit, if there were to be a flood and whatever he had stored inside that building got destroyed, in no way is the city responsible for that since we issued a permit? Okay.
All right. Thank you.
This is Brenda Mead.
Councilwoman Mead.
Did the property flood during the recent event?
It, it is my understanding that that property did flood. I believe Dr. Morgan could probably address that better than I could.
Dr. Morgan.
Yes. So our property did flood. The, the buildings that we have there, the gazebo and the greenhouse are anchored, and neither one of them moved at all. So there was really no damage to either structure.
Thank you. And that conservation easement, is that, I, I couldn't quite tell from the maps. Is that along Peyton Creek or is it along Central Avenue? Where does that conservation easement go?
It actually includes Peyton Creek, but goes all the way to Central Avenue from the hotel to Pump Street.
Thank you.
All right. Thank you. We're going to go ahead and move on to Item B for presentation. And both of these items will fall under one public hearing. So Item B is an introduction and public hearing of ordinance to amend the FY 2021 budget for the city of Stanton by adding Budget Amendment Number Three. Mr. Rosenberg.
Madam Mayor, Mr. Treier will present this item. And let me just note that, as you've observed, the two public hearings will be opened at the same time after Mr. Treier's presentation. But from a procedural standpoint, the motion on this item that Mr. Treier will now present will be made before the public hearing.
Okay. So Item B will?
So after Mr. Treier's presentation, I suggest that council consider a motion on Item B and then open the public hearings after that motion is considered.
Okay. Thank you.
Madam Mayor, pleasure to be back. Tonight, we are here to introduce Budget Amendment Number Three, which totals $5,577,648, and is broken down between the general fund appropriation of $3,960,460 and school funding of $1,593,092. The general fund appropriation includes the following. FY 2020 CARES Act carryover in the amount of $2,75,961. FY 21 CARES Act receipts of $1,675,221. CARES Act funding for elections in the amount of $56,278 and fund balance of $153,000 even for the elimination of three staff furlough days. School appropriation of $1.6 million is 100% CARES Act sourced and will be used by the schools to exclusively support expenses incurred as a result of the pandemic. Details of the expenditures were reviewed during the work session. This amendment does require a public hearing and has been properly advertised. And the city manager recommends the introduction of this amendment and council to conduct a public hearing.
All right. Are there any questions for Mr. Treier? Hearing none, I will entertain a motion concerning the introduction and public hearing of ordinance to amend the FY 2021 budget for the city of Stanton by adding Budget Amendment Number Three. So this is a consideration of the ordinance. I'll entertain a motion.
Madam Mayor.
Councilman Holmes.
I recommend the ordinance be introduced as presented in the city council public hearing.
All right. We have a motion on the floor. Is there a second?
No, no. I'll second you.
All right. Councilman Claffey, second. Any further discussion? Hearing none. Ms. Simmons, please call the roll.
Ms. Doll.
Aye.
Mayor Oaks.
Aye.
Ms. Mead.
Aye.
Mr. Claffey.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Robertson.
Aye.
Mr. Holmes.
Aye.
Ms. Darby.
Aye.
Motion carries.
All right. Thank you. Next, I'm going to open up the public hearing for both Item A, which is Public Hearing in Consideration of a Request by David Morgan for a Special Use Permit for 271 North Lewis Street for the construction of an accessory residential structure on property zone B2, General Business District. And Item B, Introduction and Public Hearing of Ordinance to amend the FY 2021 budget for the city of Stanton by adding Budget Amendment Number Three. When I hit the gavel, you may come up to the podium to speak. Do we have, okay, so we do have some citizens on Zoom. We'll take the callers from Zoom first, and then we will accept folks from the audience to come up and speak during the public hearing. You can speak for or against both items. And after everyone has had a chance to speak, I will bang the gavel to close both public, the public hearing out for both items. You have five minutes to speak. Please state your name, your address. And with that, the public hearing is open. Mr. Rosenberg.
Caller on the line whose number ends in zero, zero, calling to speak about the public hearings.
Yes, I am. Can you hear me?
Yes. Please state your name and address and address your comments.
Sure. Thank you. My name is Allison Propheta. I live on Bowery Court in Stanton. I'm calling specifically about the budget amendment. I wanted to first thank city staff because I'm sure the choices that they have to make are very difficult at the best of times. So I'm appreciative of them for working so hard during a pandemic. I wanted to first express strong support for the staff recommendation for approximately $200,000 in technology improvements for council chambers and the caucus room. That will be a long-lasting benefit, long after the pandemic is over, for citizens in Stanton who cannot attend in person either because of illness, disability, lack of childcare, or transportation. And I think overall, it will help them to feel more, be able to engage more with city government. In terms of the request still under consideration, I would love for the fire department to have a COVID response unit. And I support it, but I would like for the public to get details about what that would entail. And specifically, I'd be curious to know if that would help them respond to local or regional public health emergencies even after this pandemic hopefully comes to an end. I am in opposition of the police department request because I don't see how four new SUDs and a parking enforcement system will help the city address COVID. And I also oppose the visitor center request only because they're already, hopefully going to be getting the funding that the staff recommended for them. So the additional request under consideration, I think, should be the very last thing that's funded and first address the other ones that have been made, but not the police department one. Thank you.
Thank you. Next caller.
Thank you. Next caller.
Is the caller whose number ends in six-three calling to address the public hearing items? Is there a caller on the line?
Okay. Is that it for the?
That's it for the calls.
All right. Now we will open it up for our citizens in the audience. If anyone would like to speak concerning these two items, please feel free to come to the podium. Again, state your name, your address, and you have five minutes to speak.
Madam Mayor, as, as Mr. Rhodes noted, Dr. Morgan is on Zoom. I don't know whether he wishes to make any comments to council.
Dr. Morgan, would you like to make a statement?
Yes, please.
Go right ahead.
Good evening, Madam Mayor and members of the city council. My name is David Morgan. I live at 271 North Lewis Street in Stanton. I purchased the house at 271 North Lewis Street in 1999. It was built around 1894 by Robert Stratton, but there's been a house on this property since the 1860s. I subsequently purchased the garage and dry cleaner buildings on North Central Avenue in 2004. Part of the dry cleaner building was actually the original carriage house for the main Stratton house. The house was used as a residence until 1987, when it was converted to three apartments and a photography studio. We were granted the S U P that was indicated by city staff to return the house to a single-family residence and have spent four years renovating the house. And subsequently, spent about three years improving the landscape. We donated the open space easement to the city in November 2010, and that required us to remove the buildings and pavement along North Central and daylight the creek, which we've done. The purpose was to improve the stormwater management and enhance the aesthetics of the neighborhood. Over 20,000 square feet of impervious service, service was removed. We're at the point now where we would like to store our garden equipment on the back of our property, and we finally could place a shed back there after removing all the piles of dirt that had been there for a few years. We ordered a 12-by-16 shed from Hellmouth Builders since we were under the impression that the easement allowed us to place up to 750 square feet of outbuildings. We're also considering placing a larger shed on the property, but we knew we would need a building permit for that. But when we applied for the building permit, we were told that we needed to have a minor subdivision approval, boundary line adjustment, basically, special use permit, and an engineering study that would satisfy the floodplain requirements. So I'm before you tonight requesting that you approve the S U P so that we can place our garden shed in the back of our property. We have withdrawn the request for the larger shed since we thought we could get by with just the smaller shed and simplify the application process. I thank you for your time and consideration, and would be happy to address any questions the council may have. Thank you.
Does anyone have any questions for Dr. Morgan? Dr. Morgan, I would just like to say, I remember when you came before the council concerning daylighting Lewis Creek. And thank you for doing that and everything that you have done on that property. It is absolutely beautiful.
Thank you very much. I appreciate that.
All right. Hearing from no one else. The public hearing is now closed. I will entertain a motion for Item A.
Madam Mayor.
Councilwoman Darby.
I move that council approve the special use permit for 271 North Lewis Street as recommended by the planning commission.
All right. We have a motion on the floor. Is there a second?
I second.
We have a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none. Ms. Simmons, please call the roll.
Ms. Darby.
Aye.
Ms. Doll.
Aye.
Mayor Oaks.
Aye.
Ms. Mead.
Aye.
Mr. Claffey.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Robertson.
Aye.
Mr. Holmes.
Aye.
Motion carries.
Great. Thank you. All right. Moving on to Item C, a Discussion in Consideration of Virginia Risk Sharing Association Risk Management Grant. Mr. Rosenberg.
Madam Mayor, it looks like Mr. Treier is ready to present this item. So I will let him do so, but I'll note for you, we discussed this grant at your last meeting. And so this is before you for approval retroactively because the grant previously applied for and has already been approved. And please, Mr. Treier.
Madam Mayor, it's a pleasure to be back. Each year, the Virginia Risk Sharing Association, Versa, our insurance provider, awards grants to its members on a first-come, first-served basis. Grants are awarded by Versa for up to $5,000 and must be used to enhance safety within our operations. This year, the Safety Committee has applied for and has been awarded for two heart-start AEDs and three monitors at a total cost of $4,806.60. The equipment will be used in Stanton City Courts. The, the grant requires no local match, and city manager recommends acceptance.
All right. Thank you. Are there any questions for Mr. Treier? Hearing none, I'll entertain a motion.
Madam Mayor.
Councilman Holmes.
I move the city council authorize application and acceptance of a grant from the Virginia Risk Management Association to fund two confined airspace monitors for use by public works employees and two automatic internal defibrillators for the Cochran Judicial Center retroactively to August 12, 2020, as proposed.
All right. We have a motion on the floor. Is there a second?
Madam Mayor.
Councilman Claffey.
I'd like to second you.
We have a second. Any further discussion? Ms. Simmons, please call the roll.
Mayor Oaks.
Aye.
Ms. Mead.
Aye.
Mr. Claffey.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Robertson.
Aye.
Mr. Holmes.
Aye.
Ms. Darby.
Aye.
Ms. Doll. Ms. Dahl.
Aye.
Motion carries.
All right, thank you.
Madam Mayor, I'd just add that we are still awaiting word on the other grant for AEDs from the Firehouse Public Safety Foundation.
Okay.
And again, as I shared with you at the last meeting, once we receive word, if it turns out that we've received funding for more devices than we need in the Cochran Judicial Center, we will go back to the funding agencies and ask for flexibility to place some of the devices in another city facility. So we will keep you updated as that unfolds.
All right, thank you. All right, the next item on the agenda is Item D, Discussion and Consideration of Virginia Tourism Corporation Recovery Marketing Leverage Program Grant. Mr. Rosenberg.
Madam Mayor, Cheryl Wagner, the city's tourism director, will present this item.
Welcome.
Madam Mayor, members of council, thank you for having me here and for consideration of the tourism department's request this evening. The tourism department would like permission to apply for a Virginia Tourism Corporation Recovery Marketing Leverage Program Grant. The application is due within a week, but we already have a concept. The coronavirus has really affected, impacted our tourism industry around the world, but in Stanton as well. There have been things that we have done to help our small businesses, but we really need additional marketing money, and this is one way that we can get that. There's only one funding level, and it's at $20,000 is the max. There is no requirement for a match, just a in-kind, which we have plenty of that. We are already marketing Stanton. This will be a, the competition for this grant will be very strong. The last one we came to you with was for $10,000, and it was only for DMOs, which is, that's a destination marketing organization, which is what the tourism department is for Stanton. And there's only about 57 in the state. This grant is open to every tourism business in the Commonwealth. So there will be a lot of competition, but we believe our concept is strong, and our concept is, we typically promote to couples. And we realize that all of our children are behind screens right now because they're having to do a lot of virtual learning. But we have so many educational opportunities in the city of Stanton, we want to promote to families. We want them to bring their children here to learn, to go to a Shakespeare show, to go to the Woodrow Wilson Presidential Library, the Frontier Culture Museum. We have a national park outside our door, you know, to go on a ranger hike. So that's our concept. It hasn't been completely fleshed out right now, but we would like your permission to apply for the grant.
Right, are there any questions for Ms. Wagner? Thank you. Sounds exciting. All right, hearing no questions, I'll entertain a motion.
Madam Mayor.
Vice Mayor Robertson.
I move that city council authorize application for and acceptance of, if awarded, the Virginia Tourism Corporation Recovery Marketing Leverage Program Grant for marketing support to promote the city of Stanton.
All right, we have a motion on the floor. Is there a second? Second. All right, we have a second. Any further discussion? Ms. Simmons, please call the roll.
Ms. Me.
Aye.
Mr. Claffey.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Robertson.
Aye.
Mr. Holmes.
Aye.
Ms. Darby.
Aye.
Ms. Dahl.
Aye.
Mayor Ochs.
Aye.
Motion carries.
Great, thank you. All right, the next item is Item E, Presentation and Consideration of Work Plan of Stanton Bicycle and Pedestrian Advisory Committee. Mr. Rosenberg.
Madam Mayor, Mr. Rhodes will present this item.
Thank you, Mayor Ochs, city council members. In the staff briefing, I provide a little history on the creation of the Bicycle Pedestrian Advisory Committee. I'll kind of skip over that and get to the business at hand, and I would note that in January of 2015, city council adopted a resolution establishing the Stanton Bicycle Pedestrian Advisory Committee, and one of the duties of the committee is to prepare a bicycle pedestrian program work plan, setting forth goals and objectives, subject to approval by city council. And the committee created such a work plan in 2016, which was reviewed and approved by council, and that has served the committee for several years. However, the committee has since decided that they need to revise that work plan, and over the past couple of meetings, they have drafted the work plan that's before you tonight. And I will turn it over this time to one of the committee members, the primary writer of these, this work plan, and that's Trafford McRae. And I would also note that Sarah Holberg is also participating by Zoom. She is the chair of the bike ped committee, if you have any questions of her.
All right, thank you. You guys can go ahead and get started if there was any.
Trafford. Thank you, Rodney. Madam Mayor, members of council, on behalf of the Stanton Bicycle and Pedestrian Advisory Committee, I would like to say thank you for the opportunity to present the 2020 work plan to you. As Rodney said, the committee's review of the 2016 plan showed that many of the larger goals identified in that document were completed, such as riding the Stanton Bicycle and Pedestrian Plan and the draft Greenways Plan. These initiatives provided fantastic framework for improving bicycle and pedestrian facilities in the city and can lead to positive impacts for visitors to Stanton as well as the city's citizens and businesses. Many shorter-term goals were also included in the original work plan. The committee decided that these tasks needed to be reevaluated, and the best ways to promote the Bicycle and Pedestrian Plan and Draft Greenways Plan also considered. Before we go further, I'd like to add just a quick note on the format of the work plan. It's based on a business plan model that's intended to be lean and flexible enough to advance the long-term goals in these larger plans by identifying incremental steps that can be taken to move those initiatives forward and also make sure other pedestrian and bicycle interests are considered. One of the first things the committee did was look at the mission, and we decided to keep the original mission of the committee, which is to foster a more bicycle and pedestrian-friendly community by advising the city of Stanton on behalf of its residents and visitors. We also looked at the vision statement and decided to take a more targeted approach, and our vision is to help the community achieve the many benefits of a safe, robust bicycle and pedestrian system and help implement well-designed and cost-effective investments in bicycle and pedestrian infrastructure. After defining the mission and link, mission and vision, the committee next moved to identify linkages or groups the committee can possibly work with. These include city and state government agencies, regional organizations, and community members, such as neighborhood groups or faith-based organizations. The committee is hoping to engage many of the linkage groups we have identified and begin the conversation by articulating our vision and then asking the simplest question, how can we help you? I'm not going to list all of these almost 20 groups tonight, but I want to mention some ongoing discussions with city park departments that have already yielded positive results. The committee has partnered with the Parks and Recreation Commission and city staff to examine ways to improve safety and functionality at Gypsy Hill Park for all users, including motorists, bicyclists, and pedestrians. We hope to soon begin conversations with the schools administration and the public works department, and we also have a strong working relationship with the police department. There's a police department representative on the committee who has provided valuable insight on the type of education that's most effective for motorists, bicyclists, and pedestrians to all travel safely together. Next, we listed the resources the group can use. As a volunteer committee, these resources are somewhat limited, which makes coordination with linkage groups so important. In addition to support from city staff, one of the strongest resources for the committee is community support. The Bicycle and Pedestrian Plan process provided several opportunities for the public to provide input. And the Greenways Plan received nearly 100 responses to an online survey in November of 2019. The Bicycle Pedestrian Plan and Draft Greenways Plans are also valuable resources because they provide a good foundation for setting goals and objectives. Using the linkage groups and resources as a guide, the committee compiled a list of goals and objectives that are a good mix of short-term, cost-effective tasks, as well as long-term projects that target the group's vision. Some of these goals include supporting the implementation of the Bicycle Pedestrian Plan and Greenways Plan by identifying incremental steps to move these initiatives forward and meeting with linkage groups to see how we can work together to make Stanton a better place for walking and biking. The committee was then able to identify a set of priorities based on the goals and objectives. These include continuing to work with the Parks and Recreation Commission and city staff to define and implement safety improvements in and around Gypsy Hill Park and to explore the feasibility of installing wayfinding signage to highlight the route from the wharf to Gypsy Hill Park that is included in the Greenways Plan. The committee also views installation of bicycle route striping as recommended on Churchville Avenue as recommended in the Bicycle Pedestrian Plan, and potential marking of bicycle and pedestrian lanes on Commerce Road north of Coulter Street that's included in the draft Greenways Plan as cost-effective, worthwhile projects to pursue. Lastly, the committee intends to work to advance educational programs and policies to enhance bicyclists and pedestrians' safety, such as increasing driver awareness and drawing from lessons learned with the potential Gypsy Hill Park safety improvements. The city has consistently received feedback that the public desires safe places to walk, run, and ride bicycles. Beyond recreation, these modes of travel are important to residents and visitors that walk to services and destinations throughout the city, employees of essential businesses that rely on non-motorized transportation, and students that simply want an independent way to travel to school. The Bicycle and Pedestrian Advisory Committee developed this work plan to build on its mission and vision, and we will hopefully establish linkages between other groups that will also benefit from having well-defined, achievable goals and objectives to make bicycle and pedestrian travel, travel safer and more accessible in Stanton. On behalf of the committee, we look forward to working with city council and our community to put this plan in motion. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any questions? Ms. Holbrook, would you like to say anything? Is she there? Can't see her. Sarah, are you there? I guess not. All right, are there any questions? Any comments? Okay, if not, I'll entertain a motion.
Madam Mayor.
Councilman Claffey.
I move that city council approve the work plan proposed by the Stanton Bicycle and Pedestrian Advisory Committee as presented.
All right, we have a motion on the floor. Is there a second?
Second.
All right, we have a second. Any further discussion? Ms. Simmons, please call the roll.
Mr. Claffey.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Robertson.
Aye.
Mr. Holmes.
Aye.
Ms. Darby.
Aye.
Ms. Dahl.
Aye.
Mayor Ochs.
Aye.
Ms. Me.
Aye.
Motion carries.
Thank you, and thank you for all of the advisory committee's hard work. You guys have been working on this for so long. Thank you so much. All right, the next item on the agenda is Item F concerning the Augusta Street wall, the city of Stanton versus Bellamy. Mr. Rosenberg.
I have nothing at this time, Madam Mayor.
Mayor Ochs.
Councilwoman Darby.
After further review and consideration of the approved resolution dated August 27, 2020, involving the city of Stanton versus Deborah Chilton-Bellamy, I take issue with some of its contents and verbiage. I would like to have a reconsideration of the vote on the resolution, and I move to reconsider the vote for the August 27, 2020 resolution involving the city of Stanton versus Deborah Chilton-Bellamy.
Mayor Ochs, councilwoman Meade, a point of order.
Madam Mayor.
Vice Mayor Robertson.
In issuing that, since Amy made that move, I would like to.
Let me state, we do not.
I've called a point of order, Mayor Ochs.
What is your point of order, council?
My point of order is that any member of the council voting on the prevailing side of any question voted on by the council may move a reconsideration thereof at such meeting or the next succeeding regular meeting. Councilwoman Darby did not vote on the prevailing side of that question.
She did. She voted yes, so she was on the prevailing side. And since this is a reconsideration, we do not need a second, so is there any further discussion?
Madam Mayor.
Mayor Ochs, she did not, I'm sorry, Mayor Ochs, she did not vote on the prevailing side.
Did, she certainly did.
I want to call, I want to call for a minute.
Vice Mayor Robertson.
Madam Mayor, I move to amend the resolution of August 27, 2020 by striking line four after the word "two" through line five. In addition, striking lines from 11 after the word "Stanton" through 80, and striking the words from line 83 after the word "Virginia" through 96, and insert the words at line four after the word "two" through line five, the city of Stanton versus Deborah Chilton-Bellamy, and on line 11, insert a period after the word "Stanton." Also, insert at line 83 after the word "Virginia," the litigation and any action involving the city of Stanton versus Deborah Chilton-Bellamy in relation to the property located at 1403 North Augusta Street in the city of Stanton, Virginia, otherwise known as the wall, shall cease in its entirety effective immediately. In addition, the Stanton City Council respectfully directs its legal counsel, including litigation counsel, to dispense with any further action in whatever form involving above cited case, and unless already completed, litigation counsel is to provide the Supreme Court of Virginia a professional notice of the withdrawal of the city of Stanton in said case of Deborah Chilton-Bellamy per the decision and under the direction of the Stanton City Council. Madam Mayor, I have a copy of the amended resolution with said change.
All right, so we have a motion to amend the resolution from August 27, 2020, and Madam Mayor.
I'm, I'm, yes, I second Vice Mayor Robertson's motion.
Okay, so we have a second, so we have a motion on the floor to amend the resolution, and a second, is there any further discussion?
Madam Mayor.
Councilman Claffey.
Since the August 27, council meeting, I've done an in-depth analysis of money spent on the so-called wall, and would like to inform the public by getting this overview on the public record. I thank Mr. Green and his assistant, Robin Ross, for all their time and help last week. City council members have received this information in two memos dated 9/3. In total, our city attorneys, their spreadsheet shows that over $136,000 has been spent. Majority, $104,962, has gone to Nelson McPherson Summers and Santos, an excellent law firm who has won every case, two trips through the circuit court, one trip to the Virginia Supreme Court. The Virginia Supreme Court case is particularly appropriate because on 8/17/2020, the property owner has applied for a second return trip to the Supreme Court. Supreme Court visits have two phases. Part one, a tribunal of judges determine whether the case is worthy to be heard. This cost us between December 15, December of 2015 and October of 2016, this portion cost us $6,968. Once the tribunal approves it, you go to a full hearing in front of the Supreme Court. This took between December 2016 and December of 2017, a total of $23,954 were spent on litigation. litigation. Part one will not be a factor based on last meeting's resolution, but monies need to be spent on a full hearing. Last time it cost us almost $24,000. In addition, in this wall issue, Mr. Gwynn has contracted with Ms. Sharon Pandak, a former Stantonian and a brilliant mind, who I know because she was my former debate partner in high school. But Sharon Pandak is the former county attorney for Prince William County. She has been paid $8,140 for advice in litigation for this wall. Also, $10,000 has been paid to Sterling Reeves, another law firm for advocacy concerning special favoritism legislation, after an uncodified act was passed in the General Assembly in 2019 concerning this wall. Also, in 2018, $2,700 was paid to Frazier and Associates to create visual images of what other houses on North Augusta Street would look like with six-foot walls. Mr. Bill Frazier states he completed this task, submitted the bill and was paid, the Stanton City tax dollars, of course, but the images were not used by Mr. Santos in the 2018 Circuit Court case. We appear to be in a vicious cycle. In 2008, the BZA, which is the Board of Zoning Appeals, they granted a variance for this wall by a five-to-zero vote. The city appeals to the Circuit Court, who overturns it. The property owner appeals to the Supreme Court, who sends it back to the building, the BZA, the Board of Zoning Appeals. Once again, it goes to the BZA, and they give a variance again by a three-to-two vote. Stanton appeals it. We go back to Circuit Court, and now we're on our way to the Supreme Court. So we are in phase six of a two-cycle run. The taxpayers, meanwhile, are at $136,000. There's a looming potential bill of another $24,000 if we have coverage at a Supreme Court hearing coming up. Why? Why have we done this? Million-dollar question. I think it is because the BZA recommendations have been ignored. The BZA is a five-member board appointed by the judge of the Circuit Court, tasked to decide appeals about the enforcement of zoning ordinance. Let's let their input be meaningful. If we had listened to them the first time, we would have $136,000 additional dollars. Let's stop this cycle. Madam Mayor, I call for the question.
All right, we have a call for the question.
Mayor Oakes, I have a comment or two. This is Brenda Mead.
Simmons, call the roll. We have a call for the question. Ms. Simmons, call the roll.
This is illegal. We have...
This is not... This is illegal. You're right.
We have a call for the question.
City Code Section 2.10130, reconsideration of vote. This is illegal.
Call for the vote.
Vice Mayor Robertson.
Aye.
Ms. Me.
No.
Mr. Holmes.
No.
Mr. Claffey.
Aye.
Ms. Doll.
This is an illegal procedure, and...
Yea or nay.
Yeah, yea or nay. You don't want a meeting to go by without a vote. We're out of order, but we did not have the opportunity to discuss this.
Yea or nay. Yea or nay.
This is not how you perform in a meeting. This is so unprofessional. It's disgusting. What you've just said is if you have enough money, you can break any law that Stanton makes. That's what you're doing. If you're voting yes for this, you're saying it's okay if you're rich to ignore the laws of this city. It's only the poor and the middle class who have to abide by the laws. So of course, I'm voting no, and I hope someone takes you to all the court.
No?
Yes. Ms. Darby said aye.
Okay.
Then you?
Yes.
Motion carries.
All right. So, the motion carries. The next item on the agenda is Item G concerning the parking lot on North Lewis Street belonging to American Shakespeare Center, and Mr. Rosenberg.
Madam Mayor, again, this item was added to the agenda on the request of apparently a council member. I was unaware of the addition until the motion was made during the work session. I likely will have some observations to share based on council's discussion.
All right. Are there any comments?
Mayor Oakes, this is Brenda Mead.
Councilwoman Mead.
Yes, thank you. I'm going to call a point of order again on this item. Any member, and this is Section 2.10.130 of the Stanton City Code, "Any member of the council voting on the prevailing side of any question voted on by the council may move a reconsideration thereof at such meeting or at the next succeeding regular meeting, but no vote of a former meeting shall be reconsidered unless there be present at the subsequent meeting as many members as were present at the former meeting when the vote was taken." We cannot reconsider this item.
Yes, we can, Councilwoman Doll, excuse me, Councilwoman Mead, because this was made into a motion by a new council member that was not on the council at the time the vote this was taken, and we did approve it when we approved the agendas, so therefore it is allowed.
When we approved the agenda, Mayor, we simply approved discussion of the item. We did not approve a reconsideration of the vote.
We had it...
And I would like council to weigh in on this.
Councilman Claffey has every right to bring it up, so...
Mayor Oakes.
Councilman Holmes.
Well, why do y'all wait until we get in here and we don't know about this beforehand? I mean, this is really ridiculous.
Councilman Holmes, we have the discussion.
Oh, yeah, right now, but I mean, you know, y'all just like, just threw all this stuff in here without even saying anything to us beforehand. I mean, you know, we come in here thinking certain things are going to be on the agenda, and then there's other things that are added later.
Councilman Holmes, that's been done by previous council members in the past. I mean, it's just normal procedure, and you voted on it. You voted in favor of the agendas, so you voted that this would be added to the agenda for the regular meeting, so...
A point of order. I'm going to call another point of order, Mayor Oakes. If you're going to participate in the debate, you need to hand the gavel over to another member and refrain from...
I do not bring it up, so therefore I do not have to do that. Your point of order is not recognized. Is there any further discussion?
This is Carolyn Doll. I would like to point out that clearly we are not operating under Robert's Rules of Order, even though our charter and bylaws require that, but we're just going by whichever ideas that the Fab Four come up with. You know, I hope somebody is watching you carefully, because this is so inappropriate. Mr. Holmes was correct that this is not how we operate. This is unprofessional and probably illegal, but we'll find out, won't we?
It's not illegal. It is according to Robert's rules. We have the right to bring it back up, and it was approved when the agenda was approved by a five-to-two vote to allow it on the agenda. So is there any further discussion? Councilman Claffey.
Madam Mayor, due to the pandemic crisis and two floods back-to-back in the City of Stanton, the extraordinary financial toll it has taken on the City of Stanton, I would like council to reconsider the vote to approve the purchase of the 240 North Lewis Street parking lot on the Stanton City Council from ASC. The agreement entered into by both parties, there is a 120-day investigation period, which means we have until October 26, 2020, before the agreement is binding. Due to the known and unknown financial hardships on the city, I cannot in good conscience approve $185,000 for a purchase price plus repair monies to purchase a parking lot on 240 North Lewis Street, and therefore I move the Stanton City Council at this time withdraw from the purchase agreement between the Stanton City Council and American Shakespeare Center, voted on June 25, 2020, due to the financial uncertainty of the City of Stanton. I request this withdrawal take place before the end of the 120-day waiting period.
We have a motion on the floor, and since this is a motion and not a reconsideration, I'll entertain a second.
Second.
We have a second. Is there any further discussion?
This is Carolyn Doll. My question to the council members who want to withdraw from this is, number one, you don't care at all about the people that rely on bright transit for their transportation, but once again, they're not rich, and they don't have Mark Obenchain as their attorney. So I guess that's how you decide how you're going to vote, one way or the other. It's disgusting, and it's not... You're hurting the city when you do this.
Are there any further comments? Councilman Holmes.
Have you given any consideration what it's going to cost to move it somewhere else? Because anywhere else we move it, we're going to have to build up the pads, we're going to have to do all the work that we're going to have to do there anyway. We talked about North Augusta, which was a possibility, but you're going to lose all those parking spots and stuff like that that are much closer to downtown, whereas this place has parking spaces pretty much for a lot of people to leave their car, go to Blue Ridge, go to wherever, you know, and you're not going to have that anywhere else. And I just, I don't know if you thought about those things, but if you think about how it might affect businesses where you put this thing at, you don't want to put it right out here by the police station because you couldn't even get in and down the road, plus it's a steep hill, so anybody that's handicapped or has any kind of disabilities would have a hard time getting on the bus. There, it's level, it's, I mean, it's known, I mean, everybody knows where it is. You start moving it around, and it's going to take, spend money just to try to educate people where it's at.
Madam Mayor.
Councilman Claffey.
I did look at some of the alternate choices, and the free choice that does not require any real construction to repair the lot, to bring it up to bus level, is the Augusta Street site farther down across from approximately where the Edward Jones office is and where the old dry cleaners were. That's two blocks away from where it is now, and possibly even closer to downtown Stanton than where it is now. And that would require nothing more than putting a concrete pad in there for the canopies, and that was a $10,000 fix. And that's opposed to paying $185,000 for the parking lot and then having to pay anywhere from $60,000 to $120,000 additional dollars to bring it up to code because of the, well, it flooded pretty badly, as we all know, North Lewis Street was under the floodwater, and it's giving way, already before the floods, we had a tremendous pothole problem out there on that lot already. So we're talking saving $250,000 by just moving it two blocks possibly closer to your restaurant.
It's not going to save you $200,000, because one thing, people aren't going to have anywhere to park, you know, and it could adversely affect some of the businesses that are right there on that street that depend on that parking, you know, and I mean, and you're going to have to do some other things besides just put up covers for them people to sit. I don't think that that's set up for that right there, and I don't know that the road would hold those big old buses.
According to the city, it said it would. They were bus-ready. The Augusta Street is bus-ready and does not require any structural improvements.
Mr. Rosenberg.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. If I can just make a couple of points for council's consideration. I think the emphasis here has been on the use of the lot as a transit hub, and it is an effective hub, according to the transit professionals with the Planning District Commission who operate our regional transit system. But I don't want to focus on that. I want to focus on, I think, the issue that's not perhaps fully considered, and that is its use as a parking facility, which is, you know, it provides, I'm sorry, I don't have the precise number of spaces, but dozens of spaces, maybe 40 spaces, that are available for free for unlimited parking by visitors and residents in the city. And so it's been a part of the city's parking program. It's one of two lots where that exists. The other is what's known as the Firehouse Lot, which is at the intersection of Pump and Lewis, just down the street from this lot. So we, I imagine that if the city terminates the contract, that so long as ASC continues to own the property, the city will be permitted to continue its current use. That's an assumption on my part. But ASC has made it clear that they intend to market the property if the city does not consummate the transaction, and once that occurs, I think we have no assurance, the city has no assurance, that it will continue to have available to it the use of that lot on an unlimited 24-hour-per-day, seven-day-per-week basis, as it is presently. And if at the same time, in the event of a sale, we lose that use and we choose to move the operation, the hub, to the Augusta Street lot, we will lose parking spaces there also that are free. I think they're time-limited, if I recall correctly. I'm not certain of that, but, so, there's a domino effect potentially where we lose spaces not only in the Lewis Street parking lot, but also on Augusta Street at the location that prefer, in that case, the preferred location of the new hub. So I would offer that information or thought to council members as you consider your decision here.
Okay. Are there any further comments?
Mayor Oakes, this is Councilwoman Mead.
Councilwoman Mead.
Yeah, thanks. I just want to remind members of council that we receive dozens of letters from city residents in support of maintaining this parking lot. I realize that the numbers are important. Mr. Claffey makes a good case, but we did receive input from citizens, and I wonder whether we're, whether you all are actually going to live up to your commitments that you made when you ran for city council, to listen to what people say. I'm just not hearing that.
All right. I would like to state that that particular parking lot, it is away from the downtown area, and I understand that it's free parking. Maybe we need to look at some other areas for free parking, such as the Johnson Street Parking Garage. And Mr. Councilman Claffey's motion was not to purchase the parking lot at this time because of the fact that we do have a COVID-19 pandemic going on right now and two floods that the city is still trying to recover from, so it's a matter of concern with the finances for the city. And we just heard from Mark Richmond with Ellicott City and their flood plan, which is going to cost at least upward $100 million. So this is of great concern. Right now, we still have employees that are being furloughed, and we need to be able to use all our resources in a manner that is responsible towards our citizens, and we are listening to the citizens because they're asking us to be physically responsible, absolutely. So with no further discussion, Ms. Simmons, please call the roll.
Ms. Me. Mr. Holmes.
No.
Mr. Claffey.
Aye.
Ms. Doll.
No.
Ms. Darby.
Aye.
Mayor Oakes.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Robertson.
Aye.
Motion carries.
All right. The next item on the agenda is matters from the city manager.
Madam Mayor, I don't have anything for council this evening. Thank you.
All right. So the next item... All right. So the next item will be matters from the public. We will hear from citizens through Zoom first, and then we will take matters from the public from our citizens within the audience. Please remember you have five minutes to speak. State your name, your address, and please refrain from using profanity and make your comments directed to the council as a whole rather than individual council members. All right. Our first caller.
Is the caller whose number ends in 63 on the line?
Yes.
Please state your name and address.
Yes, my name is Frances Fairfield. Everyone knows me as Fritz.
Please address your comments to council.
Yes. I appreciate the opportunity to speak to you this evening. And I wanted to thank council for, thank council for their presence this evening. I wanted to bring the point up that fall is near, fall is almost here, summer is over. I know that because I'm assisting in virtual learning most every day, so I know fall is here. We are moving on to the matters at hand. Important issues are pressing. We're waiting for this city council. The citizens don't care if some of you have regrets that you did not participate in a hot summer parade. We do, however, care that you show up and step up to move forward from the pandemic and the destructive flooding, the two economic disasters that have hit our city with a double whammy. The war of the worlds is not in our best interest. Thank you in advance for bearing the hatchet and the political agendas. Thank you.
Thank you. The next caller.
Is the caller whose number ends in 00 on the line?
Hi, can you hear me?
If you can speak up a little bit, it would be helpful. Please state your name and address and address your comments to council.
Hi, is this any better?
Yes, it is. Thank you.
Okay, it's Allison Profeta. I live at Faria Court in Stanton. Your meetings are exhausting, I got to tell you. I'll just start with that. And as far as the parade, I understand there are things that are more important, but that doesn't mean that we just ignore what our elected officials are or aren't doing or how they are or aren't spending money. All you have to do is just address it. That would be super helpful so that we know what happened. I know I had to explain to my kids why I didn't take them to the parade after telling them that everything on July 4th was canceled. I also would like for all of you to please, I don't know if you'll do this because it seems like you don't even want to address racism, but ableism would be super important for you to look into. So again, things like allowing people access to meetings. Mr. Rosenberg, you've done an amazing job trying to hold stuff together there. And I, this isn't a criticism, and I know that today's meeting was especially chaotic. But in this meeting, it wasn't announced during the public hearing or right before matters from the public, unless I missed it somehow. I didn't hear it announced that callers should start calling in so that they know it's time. So that, in addition to what Mr. Holmes was saying about when you do decide wherever you're going to put this transportation hub that you just basically shut down, I guess, when you do decide where you're going to put it, please keep in mind that people with disabilities use public transportation all the time. And please don't put it on a steep hill. And I guess I'd say thank you, but you guys don't even know how to act like adults.
Next caller.
Is the caller whose number ends in 95 on the line?
Yes, I am.
Please state your name and address and address your comments to council.
Yes, my name is Ben Brewer, and I live at 316 Hendren Avenue. I would assume that some members of council would recognize my name from the series of emails that I've been sending for the past few weeks in reference to the Fourth of July parade event, contrary to maybe some perceptions that we've just heard. While the substance of the parade is not particularly important, and I agree it's fundamentally superficial compared to some of the things facing the city, the question of good governance is profoundly important. Nobody has responded, none of the council members who were at this parade have responded to me or responded in public about this. I would respectfully request that you take this up at the next meeting. For public hearing, I've noticed that the mayor has found time in the last couple of weeks to record a series of videos updating the city on Don Don regarding the flooding. Given the widespread question about this parade, how it was organized, who organized it, and how information about the parade was disseminated, this would be something that they could address. I hope that other members of the public will be contacting council in the next month and that this could be added to an agenda in the future. I was not able to attend or observe the work session today, but I'm hoping that this could be discussed at a public session in the future. Thank you.
Thank you. Next caller.
Is the caller whose number ends in 68 on the line?
Yes, it's me. Hi, I'm Mitch Narduzzi, and I'm at 130 South Jefferson Street. Once again, I feel compelled to call in to speak to several issues that I have with the way that the new majority on city council continues to confuse themselves. Because I consider it my duty to get into good trouble, necessary trouble. Regardless of our difference in opinions on policy, which can be addressed through rational debate, I must point out the shady political maneuvers that you continue to participate in in order to silence the voices of citizens that you represent while ram-riding your conservative agenda down the throats of every resident in our city that is crying out in protest of your self-serving methods. You are no longer running a campaign that requires you to cater to your base. You are representing the totality of our community, which includes a large number of citizens that are absolutely disgusted by your lack of morals. I encourage you to defend your position through open, honest, transparent dialogue so that issues concerning our city can be decided based on the merit of solutions and not based on your personal Republican preference. The fact that you removed the work session agenda item to discuss the misappropriation of city funds to pay for your pandering parade on the 4th simply reeks of your inability to provide proper transparency and take responsibility for your actions. Your position as city leader does not afford you the right to pick the pockets of patting citizens for your own pleasure. Just stop it. Stop padding your political pockets by using city funds to garner voter support from your base. It's just gross and beyond unethical to me. As far as your voter support transportation support from our most disadvantaged citizens while simultaneously harming one of our biggest tourist attractions, let me know that you don't give two squats about the ineptness of the systemic oppression in Stanton's previous successful attempts to mitigate disparities while also supporting the arts. And it is simply stupid. Proceeding with the purchase of the transportation hub from ASC would have benefited us all. So what in the heck is your motivation other than to rob Paul to pay Peter? And by Peter, I mean you, your agenda, your political reasons, and your silly parades and golf courses? The fact that you would pull city support from an area that has been disproportionately affected by the floods to remove free parking from Lewis Street to take up paid parking spaces on Augusta Street in order to provide free parking for visitors and tourist parking downtown in the Johnson Street lot is elitist. It also shows that you have no understanding of the actual benefits to consumers of our transit services, including something as simple as the shade that they get to set under while waiting for a ride. As far as your vote on the issue to remove litigation support to defend the city against rich opportunists from violating our zoning and building codes, I can only say that I hope that you afford the same privilege to every citizen going forward that decries foul play about the city. He and they most likely will not have the same political connections to Republican power players or the financial abundance to afford leaky lawsuits that only the rich and privileged get to take advantage of in order to get their way. Let me speak up loud and clear so that Councilmember Claffey can hear me, okay? Can you hear me? If not, I'll type out my comments to submit to you by email so that you can read every word that I say here. It's really embarrassing that you can't bridge the gap of technology in order to implement the most stringent safety measures possible during COVID. Technology works for major Zoom meetings at all levels of government and in the corporate world. So the fact that you can't adjust to it simply shows that you need to update your skillset and not ask the city to accommodate for your deficiencies. And as far as the discussion to eliminate the offensive city council meetings to be conducted in a hybrid model altogether, let me say, simply showing up in a room together does not promote social solidarity. My whole senior thesis has been about promoting social solidarity in order to take care of the needs of our community. So let me educate you on what actually would benefit our cities. Adopting the My Brothers and Sisters Keeper Initiative would promote social solidarity. Implementing the Market Alert would promote social solidarity. Funding solutions for transitional and affordable housing, funding transportation needs, making sure our citizens have access to mental health and substance use services would all promote social solidarity. Taking steps to amplify marginalized voices would generate social solidarity. Allowing for citizens who can take extra COVID precautions by staying at home and using technology in order to protect the rest of us promotes social solidarity. Don't think for one second that forcing thoughtful, considerate council members to give up their attention to ensure public safety in order to come sat and stare at your fake smiles while you maneuver your way around providing authentic leadership will promote any type of social solidarity.
The time is up.
Stop using ball-man arguments, backroom deals, and political bypass.
Next caller.
Is the caller whose number ends in 58 on the line?
Yes.
Please state your name and address and address your comments to council.
My name is Deborah Kushner, and I live on North Augusta Street. I take issue with much of what happened tonight. But I have to go back to last, the last meeting. One of the callers who called in was allowed to call in twice and was twice heard. Whereas the statements made about the rules of order is that each caller is allowed five minutes. I would hope that city council reviews that allowance in the future. But it does kind of speak to all kinds of bending of the rules. When rubber tools of orders are violated or suspected of violation, I think that they should be investigated. Minutes could be read. I really did not appreciate the mere squashing of fellow council members' voices in the middle of a discussion about, about facts and potential violations of these rules of order. It's very offensive to me. I would hope that some civility would, would be the order of the day. But I, I feel like that's, that was improper and extremely rude. Oh, there is so much. It feels very petty and partisan. The parade should absolutely be investigated. This is just not the way to start out the new administration. Zoom is really difficult. I'm elder. I don't find it easy, but for Congress or Councilmember Claffey to ask, when are we going to get together again in the middle of a pandemic, is just embarrassing. Johns Hopkins considers any closed environment risky for more than 10 minutes. These older buildings have little air exchange. 10 minutes is the hallmark for being at risk. So yes, there isn't a normal here. Facial expressions are important. We need to see exhibits. So I really hope that the citizens can use Zoom to see what's going on. Much of this is lost on us. And I just really want, I hate to say it, but very partisan, the Republican members of the council to ask, who do you serve? And if you really want to represent the citizens, we need some civility. So please, please find it in your hearts and your minds to calm down, listen to the citizens, and listen to each other. Thank you.
Thank you. Next caller.
Madam Mayor, there are no more callers.
All right. We'll accept matters from the public, from our audience.
Yes, my name is Baldwin Jennings, 332 Charlotte Lane, Stanton. I participated in the Fourth of July parade, drove my car, enjoyed the tour. The Stanton Police Department took us on. Matter of fact, I didn't realize the city is built up as much as it had. And I'm sorry if anybody else didn't get out there, take advantage of it. And I am very grateful to the new council for putting a stop on that wall. That wall has been, the city gave the gentleman permission. I talked to him, and he built the wall and explained to me why he built it. He put it up as a noise barrier because he didn't like air conditioning. He put up a hedge, which as of right now, you don't even know the walls are unless you really look for it. And I want to thank the city council for bringing this thing to an end. It's been a laughing stock at Stanton and showed how damn, how stupid some leaders have been over this wall. All the money spent and everything is assinat. And the man did everything like he's supposed to do. And I'm glad to see council took it off and put an end to it. Thank you much.
Thank you. Next.
Good evening, Madam Mayor and members of the city council. My name is Ingrid Blanton. I live at 217 North Madison Street here in the city. And I appreciate the opportunity to come before you this evening to present a petition. But first, let me give you a little bit of background about the petition in spirit of transparency. This is an effort done by a number of citizens unaffiliated with any organization. We, at our own behest, wrote the petition and circulated via email and Facebook. We did not do this with the support or endorsement of any political action committee or any other formal organization. Secondly, also in the spirit of full transparency, I will share that of the people who signed this petition, all but 20 are citizens of Stanton. The 20 who are not citizens of Stanton asked to sign the petition because they either own property here or have businesses here and therefore have an interest. So with that, I will redo this petition. And please keep in mind, as you hear my words, that I am representing the 380 people who signed this. So picture this chamber and the overflow filled with those individuals for whom I speak tonight. We, the undersigned, respectfully urge the Stanton City Council to focus on providing leadership and taking action on matters that are under your control and that have a positive and direct impact on the day-to-day lives of the citizens of Stanton. You know what they are: Stanton infrastructure, Stanton economic development, Stanton schools, and Stanton social services, to name a few. Accordingly, we urge you not to expend time and energy at the expense of broad community goodwill on an issue over which the Stanton City Council has no authority, namely the Second Amendment of the United States Constitution. Leave the matter of gun rights and gun control where it belongs: in the Virginia General Assembly, in the United States Congress, and with the United States Supreme Court. Rather, we urge you to do all in your power to bring the community together, especially during this time of extraordinary challenges and needs, with a vision of Stanton as a thriving and culturally dynamic city. We are for Stanton and are counting on you to be for Stanton too. We are for Stanton and are counting on you to be for Stanton too. With your permission, I will approach you and provide you a single hard copy of the petition and the 380 signatures, and I will also be following by email so that you all have a copy. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Next speaker.
Good evening, Mayor Oates and council members. My name is Nancy Sarles. I'm here with Alliance for the Shenandoah Valley. My address is 3419 Cold Springs Road, Greenville, Virginia. I'm here today just to say thank you to the past and present members of Stanton City Council and Stanton city staff for working with the area's citizens and protecting them and their rights for the last six years of the Atlantic Coast Pipeline struggle. You showed solid leadership and good governance by holding public meetings, asking important questions, and holding Dominion's feet to the fire throughout the long process that was heavily weighted against the citizens and clearly designed to have as little transparency as possible. You went the extra mile in questioning the state and federal agencies, especially in regard to very real and very alarming threats to Stanton's water supply at Gardner Springs. And significantly, you joined in the legal fight that made a statement to the world that you were standing strong in support of your community. Part of that fight, as I'm sure you know, went all the way to the Supreme Court of the United States. You may or may not have seen the full-page ad that ran in the Stanton and Winslow newspapers recently thanking you and the thousands of others who stood strong during the last six years. Here it is. I have copies for each of you. I want to read it to you, and I, and as I said, I have copies for each of you. For six long years, thousands of people from all walks of life believed that the destructive and unnecessary Atlantic Coast Pipeline was not a done deal. Now the Atlantic Coast Pipeline is simply done. Thank you for working hard and believing in our land, our water, our communities, and our future. So as I said, I have copies for each of you. Again, thank you for your sound leadership and good judgment and for putting the areas, communities, and the citizens first. Thank you all. I'll leave these with Mr. Rosenberg to pass out.
Nancy, thank you. Thank you, Nancy. Do we have any other speakers?
Hello again, Madam Mayor, City Council. This is Yvonne Wilson. I live on 2017 First Street in Stanton. You know, I had a speech prepared today, but I'm not going to read it. I'll tell you why I'm not going to read it. The sanctimonious attitudes that some of these citizens have concerning racism, microaggressions, misogyny, just shut up. You're not going to like what I have to say today. Two weeks ago, there was a situation where Vice Mayor Robertson was accused of being racist and misogynistic because he complimented about a black woman's hair. A certain citizen who did call in shoving her sanctimony down our faces had to know to send an email with a 46-page paper written about the, what's the word? The inferiority complex about a black woman's hair. I find that funny, that a lot of people on the left, they talk about we need inclusion and diversity in city staff, but not one of you from the left have acknowledged that a black conservative woman has come up here and announced her candidacy for city council. I guess only liberal, Black Lives Matter. You guys want me to be concerned about the legacy of dead white men, microaggressions, sexism? I don't need you to speak for me. I never have. There is nothing that I have that you have given me, and there is nothing that I have that you can take. Shut up about waste. I'm black, I'm conservative, I have a voice. I don't need yours to pander to my waste as if we're helpless. You are a disgrace. You're disgusting. I can't stand it. And to the citizen that I'm speaking on, you know who you are, ma'am. I saw on your Facebook page that you actually challenged a debate about these issues, the Second Amendment and things like that. Debate me. You name the time and place, we'll get cameras set up. Let's have a public discussion about these issues. As to the right and concern of the city council that, about the Second Amendment right, didn't Governor Northam actually pass a motion that the city council in all of the state of Virginia is allowed to discuss and make judgments on issues of Second Amendment? Correct me if I'm wrong. I don't think I am, because I can read. Name changes. Tearing down Civil War monuments all for the name of diversity and unity? You come in here and you lie on Vice Mayor Robertson about being racist? When you're going to get on here and act like you are the biggest saint for social justice? Your hypocrisy sickens me. Your actions are phariseic at best. You're no different than the people at church that want to sit up front and holler and praise the Lord in front of everyone so they can see you. And then you shove your issues, your projections down my throat. Last time I checked, deep-throating belongs in porn and between lovers, not in politics. I am sick of everyone using my race as a punchline and rope points. I don't give a damn about a Civil War monument. I don't care about their Stonewall Jackson sign either. These dead white men have never and never will make any impact on my life and how I live it. You got a problem with what I say? You know where to find me. We can definitely have a discussion about this. But cut the BS out, trying to make yourself being crusaders for racial and sexual orientation equality or whatever the heck, you know, liberal issue that you have. I'm so angry I can't even talk straight. Because every time you open your mouth and talk about this, you knock me to my face. I'm disgusted by you. But you won't challenge me because you're cowards. You have nothing more than hot air and BS. I'm not that negro. Let's debate about it. Time and place.
Are there any additional matters from the public?
Eric Varmer, 312 Fayette Street. That was good clock management. Really good, right down to the wire there. That was weird though, because right before she left, there were five people who pretty much owed the attention they're starving for. To Harrisonburg's Jennifer Brown, isn't there, right? You all know who she is, right? You're fully aware of her, right? She's not just someone randomly walking in here, right? Part of the agenda, right? Mr. Claffey, right, Mr. Robertson, right, Mayor Oakes, Ms. Darby. Why is, why is Yvonne coming in here acting like she's the dissenting black voice? It's because she wants either your seat, Mr. Holmes, or yours, Ms. Dolls, or yours, Ms. Need. Um, I don't know who your parliamentarian is. It's pretty interesting. I'm not sure that all of you are actually so experienced in that sort of, you know. That was interesting. That was good, good clock management, is what it comes down to, huh? Well, you're drawing lots of attention to yourselves for openly pugnacious, pugnaciously circumventing the will of people who have sense not to just come in and pretend they're an adversary, when in fact they're on your team. Why don't you debate her? Y'all can have your little GOP debate, and she can be the black voice. Why don't y'all let her speak for every other black person she says she's speaking for? She don't speak for me. I just wonder how long it's going to be before DSPs up in here sniffing around asking, I just wonder if there's just a controversy and a scandal coming. I just wonder. I just wonder. Y'all have a good evening.
Are there any other citizens that would like to speak? Hearing none, as mayor of the city of Stanton, I call this meeting adjourned.